Welcome everyone to the Town of Greater Napanee special session of council for the fourth day of February twenty twenty five. Sorry for a little bit of a delay there. We had some internet problems and but I think we're up and running there now. Just before we get going, I just want to remind everyone that this evening's meeting is live streamed via our YouTube channel. So welcome to the folks at home that are watching and welcome to the folks that'll watch it tomorrow or next week or next year. It'll be on our YouTube channel for everyone to watch. Having said that, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll look for adoption of the agenda as presented. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calvert, seconded by Councilor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, the motion's carried. Is there any disclosure, pecuniary interest, and the general nature there of seeing none? We're going to start this evening's meeting off with some unfinished business. We had a number of matters that we didn't get to last Tuesday, so we're going to try and clean those things up before we get into any new business. So we'll start off with our unfinished business. The first matter is the growth in infrastructure. Sixty-two Dundas Street East sidewalk encroachment request. And I see Mr. Knowles is coming to the front. Whenever you get settled in there, Mike, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, worship and through you two members of council. Before council this evening is a request from the property owner at sixty-two Dundas Street East. So that's Mama Mia's Pizza. The request is for an encroachment to install a ramp and landing on the east street side of the building. And the reason for this request is the there is an existing service delivery door on the east side of the building. It is at a substantially increased height from the steps that are in place today. It seems as though at some point in the past, the interior floor elevation was raised for unknown reasons, but it resulted in the interior floor being raised and the steps on the exterior of the building, which are currently in the east street right of way. They did not modify those steps at the time to take into consideration that increased height and overall door elevation as a result. So it's resulting in challenges with with delivery into that door. And the request is to install a landing and a ramp that would not encroach further into the east street right of way than the existing steps are today. The landing would be located in front of the service delivery door and would not impact the door that's immediately adjacent to it, which provides access to a residence. The landing and the ramp rather would run to the north and stop short of an existing electrical service box and traffic light box. The the ramp would solely be used for service delivery and it would not be a a point of entry for the general public. So under building code and renovations for sizes of suites in in older buildings and given existing challenges with elevations, it does not need to comply with the accessibility requirements in the building code, given that it's not for the general public's use. The proponents contemplated a number of different scenarios, either extending the the steps, making them compliant for that that existing service delivery door. That would result in the need for encroaching further into the east street right of way. They contemplated just doing a landing with a foldable ramp. They contemplated just a ramp that might extend from the door out quite a ways into the east street right of way. After they had assessed all those potential options, they landed on the proposal here before council this evening. So staff reviewed it. We would be supportive of the request, given that the width of the sidewalk in the area is is quite substantial. It would not impact the functionality and usability of the sidewalk for the general public, and it would not conflict with existing services in the area. So staff are supportive of the request pending the the execution of an encroachment agreement to remove liability on on the town and bind the property owner from not doing any further encroachments without gaining further council approvals, which is included in the agenda materials, items one through four. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thanks, Michael. Is there any question or comments for Michael? Go ahead, Councilor Penau.
Thank you, Michael, for this. You mentioned about some signaling control boxes and stuff. Are they out of the way? Would they need to be protected at all in case there's a runaway cart or something like that that will cause damage?
Through your worship, the the box itself is on an elevated pad, so it's ultimately providing that inherent protection. It's it's of a, I can't remember exactly the dimensions of it, but the actual box itself is set back quite a ways from the the leading edge of that concrete pad itself. So if there were a runaway cart in that instance, it would hit the the concrete step, if you will, and stop short of actually striking the the box itself.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Penau. Go ahead, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, the is there any side railing on it for right out to the very end of the ramp where it comes like it's going to come right down level with the sidewalk?
Through your worship, are you are you referring to like a guard and a handrail on on the ramp itself? Through your worship, yes, that is correct. So there would be an end post at the very, I'll say, the knife edge of the of the ramp where it meets the sidewalk. That would be the start of the the handrail, so a post and then a handrail and then guard to limit anybody using the ramp from falling off it. Or if somebody were happened happened to walk in the area, they would they would see that that guard in place. And it wouldn't there wouldn't be any, I'll say, hazard, a trip hazard in that general area there.
Thank you, Michael. That's the only thing I was concerned about was just that out at the end, if somebody was walking down the sidewalk, if they'd happen to not, you know, look down or whatever. So that's good. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Martin. Go ahead, Councilor Norrie.
I move staff recommendation.
We do have a motion to move the staff recommendation, seconded by Councilor Hicks. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to motions on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion. Opposed, the motion's carried. Next, we have the construction and maintenance of the county roads and bridges agreement. And who's going to speak to that? I see Nathan and Jeff coming up, so. Fellas, when you get up here, you'll you'll have the floor when you get settled in there, so. And who's going to start, Mr. Cuthill or Mr. Murphy?
I'll start us off this evening. Good evening, worship and members of council. Nathan and I are here to give a overview on the review of a construction and maintenance agreement with the county of Lennox and Agton. During April of twenty twenty-three, during the renewal of the the contract we have in place with the county Lennox and Agton for the maintenance of their roads and bridges, it was requested by council that staff reach out along with other lower tier municipalities and and have discussions with the county just to make sure that this agreement is fair and equitable to all parties involved, both financially and in in all of the terms that are within in the agreement are fair. We have done that. There's been numerous conversations over the last couple of years. And most importantly, just last December, I believe it was, we came together with the finances and costing of each municipality, the cost per truck or piece of equipment that costs the municipality to run these these pieces of equipment on on the county roads and maintain them. Anyway, I'll give a I'll give an overview of what the construction and maintenance agreement does. Pre-amalgamation, there was two sets of fleet and equipment that was going over our roads and maintaining them. The town's plow trucks were having to cross county roads to get to municipal roads to to plow and and treat the roads. So pre-amalgamation, the county downloaded all of their equipment to the various municipalities and now hired us to plow, perform winter maintenance, plowing, patrolling, applying of of winter materials, summer maintenance, roadside grass cutting, shoulder maintenance, hardtop maintenance, patching, and care and maintenance of the bridges and culverts. With that, and I'll pass it over to Nathan, just to give an update on the finances.
Yeah, through your worship. So within the report, it kind of breaks down the mechanics of the agreement financially. The first point I want to hit on is there's two rates that are referenced in it, one being the per kilometer rate, excuse me, and the other being OPS rates. These aren't directly related. For instance, the per kilometer rate could be driven up by changes in material costs or wages costs, whereas OPS rates are specifically related to vehicle rates. So they could, you know, if vehicle rates increase significantly, that could also affect the per kilometer rate, but it isn't always like a dollar for dollar change. So what we've seen here and going into this year is the per kilometer rate is intended to stay the same, but OPS rates are going to change. So I just wanted to make that distinction before I get into any further detail and hopefully make that clear. Within evaluating the agreement itself, the biggest thing we have to look at is vehicle costs and whether the own vehicle use chargeout that we essentially self-charge and then charge back to the county on the expense side is covering our costs for each vehicle classification. So what we've done, a big thanks goes to our mechanics who've been been very diligent in coding all of our invoices to each piece of equipment, as well as Jan, our public works coordinator, who really helped me set this up and has kind of been helping monitor this, is we charge all of the expenses that are listed within the OPS rates directly back to each vehicle. So we're able to see, okay, it costs X, Y, Z for maintenance, fuel, depreciation, so on and so forth. So the chart that you can see appended there is the culmination of that for twenty twenty-four by each vehicle class. So we're trying to evaluate the averages across those classes to see, are we essentially getting fair compensation based on those OPS rates? If you look at it a whole scale, we're almost bang on with that because the intent of the agreement is to not make money, not lose money, but essentially break even when we're operating on their behalf. So that's kind of what we got in here in front of you. There is a few other items that I just wanted to touch on. It's referenced in there that we were unable to charge out two pieces of equipment to a single individual. So an example of this would be the chipper, if it's hooked on to the back of a tandem or a one ton, I don't know exactly how that works, but we could only originally charge out one of those pieces of equipment. We've actually just recently found a solution, so we can do two pieces of equipment. So we've addressed that concern. So in twenty twenty-five, that has been remedied. So that was one of the gaps in our financial data that we were a little bit worried about, but we've been able to address that with with our software provider. And then there's just two major driving factors, I would say, in the costs that we need to really be mindful of. One is depreciation. We're taking a look at our depreciation cycles with our tandem trucks, particularly right now we're on a fourteen-year cycle. The other partners in the lower tiers are doing a ten-year cycle, and that will really affect the per hour rate that we're charging out expense-wise. So you look at twenty twenty-five, it looks like we're going to have, you know, a bit of profit on that. That would really adjust if we changed to a ten-year cycle on our trucks because if we're on a fifteen-year, right, that that thirty-three percent change essentially to that. And then our vehicle maintenance. We've had some vehicles that have had some heavy, heavy costs in the past couple of years, and that really drives our expense items. So yeah, I'm happy to take any questions on on the financial breakdown of it, or if there's anything that seems unclear in the agreement.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Nathan. Councilor Penau.
Thank you, worship through you. Nathan, thanks for this, and thanks, Jeff, for this. When I first saw this report, I had a heyday with it because I like to add things up and nothing added up. So I sent out an email and you were very nice to respond and tell me what I was doing wrong. My issue was with what you mentioned about not being able to bill out the second piece of equipment. And and we found a solution for that. But you did mention a soft a new software provider. So one one of the questions I have for you, do we already own that software or do we have to purchase it? And my other question was, even though that we weren't able to show that on the books, but were we actually billing that back to the county when we were using it?
Through your worship. So this is through our current software provider. So all of our tracking data in terms of equipment hours charged out, we track that directly through our payroll software. So when when we're keying hours on payroll, the equipment is charged at the same time. So it wasn't actually like adding a new software. It was basically just enabling that function properly. So there was nothing there, really. Honestly, a minor change in the end, so that was great. There's definitely some hours that were likely not captured, and Jeff can maybe speak to a bit more of that, but they were likely missed. To some degree, we've tried to capture as much as we can, and we try to make adjustments where we can, but.
Just to touch on that, we knew of the the inability to track two pieces of equipment. So we did have measures in place. We have daily cost cards that we track anytime we did work with the county. That's where the hours that are accumulated on here with some of these pieces of additional equipment, they're actually hours that would have been used during county work. And some of these pieces of equipment are utilized more so on extra work that we do for the county that wouldn't be inside the maintenance agreement. They would be built on top of or in addition to. Though, yes, we had safeguards in place with daily cost cards that would identify multiple pieces of equipment, and we would add that in. It was it was just on the general day-to-day activities that we're unable to no add in two pieces of equipment, though any county billables were included.
Yep, go ahead, Councilor Penau.
Thank you, worship through you. Just as a follow-up, so I understand in two thousand twenty-five, it's going to be easier for you to track it because that sounded a little bit laborious to do that.
Through your worship, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Penau. Councilor Hicks?
Thank you through you, your worship. Sorry, I can't hear myself. So so you mentioned, Jeff, that if extra work is done. So outside of the standard maintenance agreement that we have with the county, if extra work is undertaken, for instance, they want us to clear dead ash trees on a stretch of road, we bill them at the going market rate for that type of work? Or do we just bill them our cost? Are we are we making some money on that additional work outside of the scope?
Through your worship, no, we are utilizing the same OPS one twenty-seven rates. So we're not, we would be making any profits in that are identified in here. And we would be offsetting our our operating for any time we're working for the county, we budget to pay our staff their hours through our operating line. So anytime that we would be doing work for the county, we would be receiving an offset of them budgeted dollars and also helping pay for the piece of equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilor Hicks. Councilor Shank?
Now, one tandem truck does how many kilometers of road? Maintains how many kilometers? I can't remember right off the top of my head.
On average, a tandem plow route would consist of anywhere from forty to fifty kilometers of road. So where I'm getting this now, guys, I just, I'm not disagreeing with any of your, you know what I mean? I just try to help the situation here for me to understand also.
So we have a look at tandem trucks because this is one of the ticket items that we need the most that we have to replace. You're running on a fourteen years instead of a ten-year. So your cost recovery would be a lot higher, you know, on a ten-year rather than a fourteen-year. And if everybody's doing it on a ten-year, maybe we should do our billing out at a ten-year also. All right, because we're losing, you know, because we're extending it, you know. So especially when we have one hundred and fifty-eight kilometers of road, that means three trucks, all right, at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece, and correct, generally, for for a snowplow. So when I'm looking down here on a tandem and a cost per hour, just for the twenty twenty-four, was seventy-three twenty-five per hour that you were billing them out at. All right. Now you divide that by your five hundred and fifty thousand, you get seven thousand four hundred and eighty hours that you're going to get out of a thing. That's way, and if you figure out how many hours and how many kilometers you get an hour, are we truly getting a cost? It's not supposed to cost them more money. It's not supposed to cost us. But I want to have make sure that they're paying us definitely enough to cover our cost to replace those those three vehicles, those tandem trucks that are snow plowing their routes, you know what I mean? Because of the cost of it, and we need to make sure that they're paying their fair share. So we're not taking the Town of Greater Napanee, which is the county's responsibility, to pay for it. So I would I would go for a fourteen-year depreciation to a ten-year depreciation. And then I would go ahead and just crunch those numbers at that rate that 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 because I'm going at seven thousand four hundred and some odd hours, there isn't too much left of that vehicle, you know. So that's, maybe I'm just being greedy. I'm not sure. I would I would check into those numbers because it seems awful light to me, you know what I mean? That's all.
So through your worship. Yeah, go ahead, Nathan. Thanks, Councilor. Yeah, through your worship to Councilor Shank. Yeah, so you are correct. We have to evaluate that on a ten-year cycle going forward. However, we have vehicles that have been in service for eight, ten years, right? So adjusting that cycle now somewhat, I don't want to say redundant, but difficult to do without doing a large adjustment financially. And it, I guess it doesn't really change the fact that it's gone on for that those number of years going forward. We intend to change that. And I don't think that that's something that has always been the case. To my understanding, this is this is new for some of our other lower-tier municipalities that they've shifted to a ten-year from a fourteen. So I think that's part of it. But you are correct. Yes, it would change the amount we need to charge out per hour. That is baked in as part of the depreciation. So that's where we get that consideration from the county, and that's that's part of that calculation. I think I mentioned in when I was opening there, if you look at the twenty twenty-five gain-loss rate, we'd be about, I think it's eighteen, almost nineteen dollars an hour. So if we adjusted that depreciation rate, that should give enough consideration, it would give enough consideration for those newer vehicles to be included within that. The other thing you have to look at, too, is if you have a truck that is going to that eleven, twelve years potentially after that, you'll see that drop on the back end. So it works both ways essentially, right? The the real driver on that would be your maintenance costs. If you're continuing to hold those vehicles and paying depreciation on on fourteen years, but your maintenance is going through the roof, that's where you're likely getting hit harder, rather than if you change the depreciation cycle and you're keeping them longer, you shouldn't see that that maintenance spike till later on.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
So Nathan, what only way I'm looking at it is, is you know, the the concerns we have with the fleet and especially our large fleet, how are we going to replenish this large fleet? So that's the reason why when you're when you put out the bill once a year, it's a brand-new bill. We're changing our, you know, our our billing module, you know what I mean, of what it actually costs, what it doesn't cost, that we have, I want to make sure that there is enough money that it's not, you know what I mean? That's all I'm saying is I don't need any answers right now. It's just just make sure that you, when you calculate it, it's a new bill every month that you can go ahead, or a new bill every year, you know, that we're getting a cost recovery on our on our tandems. Because it's six thousand dollars a kilometer, and when you look down through these numbers, what the billings are, you know, to run a just a normal tractor for cutting the roadsides, you know what I mean, and what the cost is, tractor here at was sixty-six bucks an hour. Well, I have an excavator. And for Cat to come out just to go ahead and service it, just to show up, just to look at it, was eight hundred and seventy-five bucks plus two hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour. So when you're billing it out, only at sixty-six bucks an hour, you know what I mean, as a cost recovery basis, that's where I'm saying I would just look at those things. That's all. I'm not in that position. That's your job, guys. I was just saying, you know what I mean? When you look at what if you get a load of gravel, what do they charge to go ahead and drive, you know what I mean? And just, there we go. I'm not going to beat the dead horse here, so.
Yeah, no, thanks. Thanks, Mike. And and did you want to reply, Jeff or Nathan?
Yeah, we just, the reply to it, I guess, would be that they are based off of OPS one twenty-seven rates for the operation, the hourly rate for these, which go out to associations that are large associations that have thousands and thousands of pieces of equipment into it to garnish an average hourly rate. And then essentially what we're doing on when we're doing a financial review of this is taking our repair costs. They will get better with time. And if in just essentially subtracting a percentage off of the OPS rates to ensure we're not making profit off of them, off of the county. So.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Now, on this chart, guys, wages are not included in this chart. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
I was just, I was going, okay, I just wanted to double check.
No, that's, no, that's good. And we appreciate that. Is there Deputy Mayor Calvert?
So these are all worked on with all the other lower tiers as well. So I mean, what we're charging out is what stone mills would charge or loyalists would charge. Nobody's nobody's charging more or less. Everybody's raised straight across the board. So it's fair, it's fair, I can get them.
Through your worship, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Is there any further questions or comments before we look for a motion? Councilor Martin?
Can I just ask, how do you figure out the depreciation on a particular vehicle? Is it a portion to some to the county, some to the town? How what's the?
Through your worship, we fully depreciate the asset on our books. So for instance, if we're buying a new tandem truck for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, under the new circumstance, we would depreciate it at over a ten-year period, so forty-five thousand dollars a year, we would depreciate it. Now, these numbers do include depreciation costs, so it's baked into that what we're charging back to them. So that's how it's covered off, rather than them saying, out of our budget each year, here is what, I guess, for sake of argument, half of that twenty-two thousand five hundred paid to you. It's baked in over time throughout the useful life of the asset as we charge it out and use it on their roads.
Okay.
Yep, we got it.
Okay, that answers part of what I was, that that was my main concern when I was going through this whole report was the capital costs and some vehicle, is there any vehicles we wouldn't need if we didn't do the county's work? Like, I was concerned about the depreciation part of it, and I I guess you've explained that to me as as good as you can on that. But that that was a big part of my concern was the depreciation and how many hours of a particular piece of equipment was used for the town, for the county, what the depreciation factor was in there. So I I guess I don't really have a question in there, but I just, that was my main concern was depreciation.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Quick update. So based on the one hundred and sixty kilometers that we're being paid to maintain for the county Lennox Act, and it actually works out to about four trucks that we would need to maintain the county roads. So if we didn't maintain county roads, we could essentially see a reduction in about four trucks. Those, just on the flip side of it, though, is we do operate it of our main yard in Napanee and a satellite yard in Salby and in South Fredericksburg. At those yards, we are charging out the the equipment used for loading the materials get charged out. So the county helps offset the cost of that equipment at those yards. We would need those that equipment at those yards if we were only maintaining our municipal roads as well. And then as well as having these additional four trucks, these additional four trucks can be utilized by the municipality for any capital work or works done on municipal roadways as well. So there is perks on both sides. We there would be a reduction in equipment, though also we are being, it is a benefit to the municipality to help pay for the equipment that we need to maintain our roads. So if that answers your question.
Very much. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Councilor Martin. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a recommendation that council received for information on financial services and growth and infrastructure services, construction and maintenance of the county roads and bridges agreement report. And further, that council considers this report to be complete, to complete the request for a review of the roads and bridges agreement made under resolution two forty-one slash twenty-three. Moved by Councilor Shank, seconded by Councilor Penau. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns? Yep, go ahead, Councilor Shank.
Nathan, Jeff, you review this constantly with the data that's coming in. So if things change, you know what I mean, that nothing's missed. And those comments that I mentioned to you that you you worked the numbers, you know, it's because it's it's not, it's not, I don't, I'm not really, it's what Napanee is the best for, the Town of Greater Napanee. So as long as we have that under, you know, that it's getting reviewed, so that you guys review this all the time, that we're not left, you know. So as long as we have that under, you know, that it's getting reviewed, so that you guys review this all the time, that we're not left, you know? Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Nathan.
Uh, so through your worship, yeah, we'll gladly bring back annual updates with this. Um, we've had some great conversation with the county on this. Uh, I went to my first tag meeting here in December along with the treasurer. Um, and our infrastructure staff and it was, is fantastic to deal with them, um, very open to conversation and changes. That's kind of how we got to this adjustment on the ninety percent factor as well as the OPS rates adjusting as well. So i- it's, it's been open conversation both ways and there's been a number of, of slight adjustments over the last two years. Um, both ways to, to kind of make this agreement work for all parties involved, so absolutely. And we, we do run monthly reports on um our performance measures as part of the tag agreement. So always open lines of communication, we'll gladly bring this back on an annual basis if that's the wish of council.
Yep, great, thanks, Councilor Shank, thanks, uh, Nathan. Is there anything further before we call for the vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Next matter, Greater Nappany and Area Arts Association sponsorship request. And I see Mr. Brown's coming up, so Chris, when you get settled, the floor will be yours.
Uh, thank you, worship of the members of council. Um, staff have received a sponsorship uh request from the Greater Nappany and Area Arts Association. Um, so in March of twenty twenty five, the Greater Nappany and Area Arts Association will be holding its seventh annual juried exhibition and award show Uncharted Territory at the Museum of Lennox and Addington. Um, they have reached out to us um and asked for sponsorship. Um, there are uh some different categories, the categories include gold sponsor, five hundred dollars plus, silver sponsor, three hundred to four ninety nine. Bronze sponsor, a hundred and fifty to two ninety nine and uh donor, uh fifty dollars to a hundred and forty nine. Um, just some additional background, the town of Greater Nappany has sponsored this event before. Um, the decision was made at the staff level. Um, and this is the first time that it's come across my desk, and so I just wanted to bring it to council. I, I do believe it's your privilege to um, you know, sponsor events or, or opportunities in the community um and not the staff level. The other part to that was um that historically it's come out of the public celebrations operating budget. Um, and when I took a look at that, um, you know, I didn't, didn't necessarily know if there would be enough room in there to do this. And so um I come before you tonight to um get some direction. Um, we do have uh some additional funds in the uh council donations um budget, um which uh the treasurer will speak to um later tonight. Um, but essentially I'm just looking for some uh direction on if you'd like to sponsor the event and if so, how much? And um, and then we've kind of, originally when I wrote the report, there wasn't any specific budget line uh where that would be expensed to. But um we sort of corrected that uh and given council some, some wiggle room there to be able to sponsor some of these um events that come up. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Chris, uh, Councilor Hicks.
Thank you, your worship. Chris, can I ask what the previous amount was?
Yes, so uh through your worship, Councilor Hicks, in twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty one, the town sponsored two hundred dollars. And then there was a break um in twenty two and twenty three, and then in twenty twenty four, we sponsored three hundred dollars.
Thanks, uh, Councilor Hicks, Councilor Penau.
Uh, thank you, worship, uh, through you. Chris, why, why is there a range that you have silver? Why is it three to four hundred and what's, what's the gold five hundred plus? Could you just help me out with that, please?
Yes, through your worship to uh Councilor Penau, so um there's um in the report, you'll see some different um aspects to if you're a, a gold sponsor or silver sponsor. Um, you know, they have, for example, gold sponsors will have the choice of which awards they would uh wish to present during ceremony. A video will be made of the presentation for posting on your social media and the uh GN triple A website. So there's some perks, uh, additional perks, the higher, uh, the more money that you give. So um, that's, that's the uh idea of the tiered sponsorship.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Councilor Penau, uh, is there any other questions or comments? Councilor Norrie.
I don't mean to sound like a grin, just two quick items, uh. So you're saying in the past, staff spent taxpayers' money without pass, putting it through council, even though it's two hundred dollars, is that right?
Through your worship, so yes, correct. So I look back at the history of it, um, it was sponsored by um putting it through the operating budget under public celebrations budget.
Okay, and it's number two, we have an arts and culture advisory committee who wants to run a, an art uh, not gala, but something. And I didn't want to do the budget for that, so I guess we have to decide which way we want to put our money in. We're doing the budget tonight, but anyways, that's, those are my two concerns, thank you.
Thanks, uh, Councilor Norrie, is there anything else? Yep, go ahead, Councilor Shank.
Are we still donating to the hockey team? I know years in the past, you know, if a hockey team had made it to co- or like went on to Silver Stick or whatever and there were traveling expenses and stuff like this, we would give them a certain amount. Are we still or staff still doing that?
No, so it would be through your worship, it would be my intention to bring those sponsorship requests to council. Um, what we've done in the budget is um the treasurer has added um uh twenty five hundred dollars, I believe. Um, to allow uh council a little bit of wiggle room there to be able to support some of these requests that come in. Um, when the budget was first presented, uh, we didn't have anything in the budget for these types of requests. Um, they, they come up randomly, right? So um it's, it's difficult to budget for because we don't know what uh sponsorship requests might come in. Um, but we have done that um ahead of this year's budget to allow council to be able to support some of these um sponsorship requests if they do come in.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I'm just trying to wrap my brain around this, not that I'm Mr. Scrooge also, is that. We've decided as a council to give ten thousand dollars, quote me if I'm wrong, towards community investment fund, right? All right, and then foundation, and then that is taxpayers' money that we've given. And we have a Tura that we had made that contributor that made that deal, that they give. Quote me on a, a wrong, uh, how much is that a year that they put back into the community? Up to a certain amount, I think it was around.
The A Tura Fund, yeah, it's. I think it's a hundred thousand dollars over the course of twenty years, so yeah.
So, uh, and so what my question is to the rest of council is, is. We ha- there is an organization that would like to have a, you know, donor or gold plus or, you know, they, they can go through all the different things that we've already per- previously done. Because it's all taxpayers' money, you know what I mean? Sure, you can give a donor for fifty bucks or a hundred bucks or whatever, you know what I mean? But if you, so what you do for one, you got to do for everybody. So that's the only thing that I'm saying is, is not that I'm saying I have anything against these individuals. But you got Bob over there saying, hey, guys, what about my, I give it, it's all right? So what you do for one, remember what you got to do for everybody else, that's all. Because there is money out there, they just have to apply for it also.
Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks, Councilor Shank, I uh, go ahead, uh, Andrew, and I'll comment afterwards.
Thank you, um, your worship. So through you to Bob. Uh, the arts and culture advisory committee, would that not be, if they weren't going to go through the community foundation or the A Tura Fund? Greater Nappany Arts and the Town of Greater Nappany's Arts and Culture Advisory, the two just seem to. Link up somehow, could they not approach the advisory committee to have it brought back before council? To me, if they want it before council, that's the proper channel to do it through, but that's just my take on it.
I don't know a lot about this group, but it's, I think it's more than just the Greater Nappany area. I don't know if it takes another areas that's, they use the county's building, but I think it's an outside group that uses other areas as well. I don't, I don't know if it goes far as Pecton or not, I'm not sure, so that could be part of it. But no, that's one of the first I've heard of this too, but um we just want something small.
Okay, so then, having said that, this, then it would be the community foundations, your Lennox and Addington would be the logical place for them to go then. Because it is across the county, it's not just in Greater Nappany. They've got artists coming from stone mills and loyalist and, yeah, okay, understood, thank you.
Thanks, uh, Councilor Hicks, Councilor Norrie, and I think Mr. Grant wants to weigh in.
I'm, I'm finished.
Uh, thank you, worship through you, uh, your worship to members of council. So I, I think also part of the reason to bring this forward, um, is one, we recognize the way that it was operating in terms of um staff members. Um, entertaining request was not the correct way to do that. Uh, and also having some clarity around how council wants to handle these kinds of requests in the future, which are um intermittent. Uh, if council wants to delegate uh requests of this nature to an advisory committee, I would recommend putting that into a mandate letter to, you know. Be that body on behalf of council. Uh, if council wants to make clear that your program is, is to go to the um, to the uh fund. Uh, I think that's also something that council can do and we can certainly put communications around that, that, that responsibility has been delegated out and fully funded. Um, and uh should council wish to provide uh that direction this evening or at another time, uh, we'll be happy to carry it out.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Grant. I, I, I'm not convinced forwarding these things to committees is the best way to go, at least in my humble opinion. Um. I'll compare it to the requests we get for ice time. We get number of ice time requests to donate ice time so that uh charity tournaments, uh, all kinds of things like that happen. And we've sort of put an end to that because um, and, and, and rightfully so. Uh, Mike, that you brought up is once, once you open up the floodgates, it's near impossible to stop it. And we've, we've uh. We've done, we've worked very hard to try and slow those things down. Um, we put money into that, the, the community foundation so that we would be, be removed from having hands on. It gives us a bit of a. Distance from, from having to make decisions such as these. Uh, it, it has nothing to do with this organization uh or this request. Um, you know, there, there, there's lots of them out there that will approach us at the town level to, to get something. Because I, I'm assuming they're thinking that, that we got lots of money and we can throw it around. Um, I think we can all agree that we probably don't. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's unfortunate, but uh um, it's difficult to try and. We, we, when I first started on council, we got all kinds of these requests. And uh whether it be ice time, whether it be something like this, be, or, or to sponsor something else. And uh, uh, once they started rolling in, they just didn't seem to stop until we put a stop to them. So I think there's other avenues out there for folks to, to, to um, to sponsor stuff. Um, I know personally I've sponsored things out of my own pocket, uh, one of them is going to be Friday for a hockey game. Um, so there are options out there, I just, I, I'm reluctant to. Spend taxpayers' money um funding some things that maybe the taxpayers don't want us to fund, so. Um, I, I'd just be very reluctant to, to. Open the gate for, for things such as this, so that's just my opinion, go ahead, Councilor Shank.
I totally concur with Mayor uh Terry, the. Thing is, is that the taxpayers, through the agreement with the Tura, with them building it, that was the agreement that we made with them. They reinvest into the community as a host municipality agreement, so we've already used that tax dollars for these organizations. All right, so I just, I totally concur that I, I don't want to open up another stream of it. And I, we can only go from what's done forward, that if any of the staff or make a policy that anything gets, you know, it takes the onus off of you guys. As the staff of somebody going approaching you saying, no, well, this department did, but this department didn't, you know what I mean? And you get yourself in a lot of hot water, that the minister, as council, we make a policy stating that, you know, anything like this. You know, if they want to bring it to council or staff wants to bring it to council, this is what it is, but this is the stream where you can go ahead. And through the Tura Fund or the Community Investment Fund, you're more than ample, this is all taxpayers' money still, but this is where we've streamed that money for all the organizations that want it. So I don't know how you would like to have that as a motion or, or if you want that as a motion or. But I, I need your guidance of how you would like to do, or if you think it's a good idea, or if I'm out to left field here.
I, no, I, I, I think we can deal with the specific incident tonight, uh, but we can add on to the motion that um Mr. Grant can bring back a policy with respect to these, these types of one off requests, I think. And, and maybe it's already been dealt with by policy, I don't know, Mr. Grant, but uh, um, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, worship through um Mr. Mayor to members of council. So we have developed a policy around uh events, like community events, which will be coming forward and requests for town assets. Uh, I would suggest direction to develop a policy where if there are requests of this nature to direct them to council's chosen streams. Of the A Tura Fund and the Community Foundation would be appropriate and provide a level of guidance to staff that would not be unwelcome.
Yep, go ahead, Jess.
Great, uh, through your worship, I will also just add, council does have a policy on the books, uh, but certainly if it's not clear enough, we can amend it. Um, currently, the policy does indicate that the, the primary vehicle for council grants is those two community partnership funds. But also the policy states that council will hear ad hoc requests uh throughout the year if they fall outside the bu- budget cycle if council wants to hear them. So that scenario, we could maybe tighten up with more clarity. Um, and just to, to Councilor Shank's earlier question, that is also where we have very clearly laid out that those um longstanding policies around uh. Anybody representing that Greater Nappany on the national stage, we have funding dedicated to that through that policy that is all still in there.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
If, all I'm saying is, so this doesn't have, uh. We can't, what was done is done, so what the point is, is that this doesn't happen again. So if somebody goes to Chris's office and says, hey, Chris, I'd like to go ahead, is there any way we could donate it? Oh, you've always donated in the past, all right? And then instead of him holding the bag, that no, this is the policy, we have, I'm sorry, can I, I'm sorry, we can't, but these are the streams to go. How you want to tighten it up, or if you want to bring it back to us to see if you can tweak it a certain way, just so if they go to Jeff and say, hey, I need a snowplow for the weekend. Or Nathan, hey, I need your accounting skills or whatever, or Alan, and make, Mike, uh, you know, I need some planning matters on the side, you know what I mean? So it's just so they all know, you know, what, what they can do and what they can't do, so everybody knows and then everybody is on the same field.
Yep, thanks, uh, thanks, Councilor Shank, I, I, so I, I think what I'm hearing is, is that. Um, council received for information, Parks, Recreation, Culture, Greater Nappany Area Arts Association Sponsorship Request Report. And further, that council does not support or does not approve the sponsorship request as it falls outside the perimeters of the town's community grants policy. And further, that staff be directed to bring back a revision of the policy that deals with. I'm going to look to Madam Clerk to finish it off for me. Ad hoc requests. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Uh, go ahead, uh.
That was the motion I was trying to get through my head, you did an excellent job with that, you know?
We do have a mover, Deputy Mayor Calvert, uh, do we have a second, uh, Councilor Shank? Is there any further information or questions or comments any would like to make? And Madam Clerk, do you have what you need? Thank you. Is there any other fur- further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Next matter is Chamber of Commerce Farmers Market Operating Agreement. And Mr. Grant, I think you're going to speak to that one.
Thank you, and through your worship to members of council, I am here to present uh as per council direction, a draft operating agreement for council's consideration. Uh, as well, uh, built into that agreement would be a lease agreement for two point seven percent of this facility, uh, being the rear offices on the first floor. Uh, in December, council will recall that um we received interest uh following recommendations from the Market Square Advisory Committee. Uh, to consider uh a farmer's market um to be created and run at the rear of Town Hall. And uh following that, uh, we did have interest from the Lennox and Addington Chamber of Commerce. Uh, who expressed interest in running a farmer's market and we were, uh, as I mentioned, directed uh to work with the, the Chamber of Commerce to develop an operating agreement. And that's what you have before you this evening. Uh, so included in the agreement, uh, you'll have the roles and responsibilities of each party. Um, and at a high level, um, the Lennox and Addington Chamber of Commerce would be responsible for operating. Uh, the markets, uh, vendor relationships, uh, ensuring that vendors have insurance, uh, and the like. Uh, built into the agreement is uh what support uh that the municipality would offer. Uh, that would be the provision uh and emptying of garbage receptacles, making sure that we have enough uh garbage receptacles for that kind of uh activity to take place behind Town Hall. Uh, operation of road closure measures, including the instant like installation and removal of barriers uh in the Market Square precincts uh for market days. Um, uh, entering into uh a, a cost sharing agreement for the provision of two porta potties at Market Square location for the twenty twenty. Entering into a cost sharing agreement for the provision of two porta potties at Market Square location for the 2025 operating year. In recognition that the washroom facilities that are planned within the renovation plans for this facility won't be operational in the 2020, sorry, the 2025 year. And that we agree to make washroom facilities available to the public during market days. Once the plan renovations are completed with access to the facility to be overseen by representatives of the chamber. Also included within the agreement are leasing arrangements. You will recall that the chamber expressed an interest in using the back two offices formerly the town or the the Chief Administrative Officer's office and the one adjacent to that, representing approximately 2.7% of the total square footage of this building. And so the recommended fee for that arrangement is $170 per month. That was arrived at, and I thank you for the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. We took a look at heating utilities, maintenance costs. We did not include staffing costs for the entire facility. And then we basically created what is 2.7% in the square footage of the of the building and added a bit extra because the lease agreement also identifies intermittent use of the third floor boardroom, which would be booked through the municipality's booking system and use of the washroom facilities. The the agreement also speaks to insurance requirements, ensuring that the town is named on any required insurance agreements and vice versa. And that the total term of the agreement would be five years from the point of signing with the final date. I believe it's listed as 2029, but I don't have the agreement in front of me. And so I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. It was some good conversation. I think that the agreement that is presented to council, I'm 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 fairly supportive of, and I think it fits in with the direction of the Market Square Advisor Committee and the larger body of work that's happening. And we'll discuss some of that work later this evening through both staff mandate letters and recommended mandate letters for advisory committees, which themselves were designed in part to support the broader work of the remediation of this building and the activities to take place at it. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you through your worship. Mr. Grant, you were saying that you did a cost calculation. When you did that calculation, was it based off of like last year's expenses to operate this building or the year before?
I will go, I'll ask the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture to help me out with the numbers that you provided me in terms of utilities and that sort of thing, minus staffing costs.
Yeah, thank you. So we did it off the last three years average. There was an anomaly last year that we started coding a different expense to a line that kind of threw off the average. So we did a three year average utility costs and then looked at the percentage of space that they would be using. And then use that number to to calculate a fair rental fee.
Okay, the reason I asked that question, we've this this building, other than for meetings, has been virtually vacant since the opening of 99. So which means we haven't had the heat on fully as high as, you know, normally would be if people were in here. You haven't had the air conditioning, you haven't had the daily use of bathrooms, washrooms, flushing of toilets, so on and so forth. I just wanted it it seems reasonable and I'm not doubting the work that the chamber does as a chamber member myself. Very valuable asset to our community. I just I just want to make sure we are covering our our core costs here.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver, Councilor Penal.
Through your worship to Matthew. First of all, I want to say to the chamber, I appreciate everything that you do. We most definitely, it's been proven, we most definitely do not make the best landlords. And I see this with the cost. I understand not for profit, but boy, oh, boy, two offices, use of a boardroom, that's pretty low rent. I understand that. My issue is, is that as the current Chair of the Market Square Committee Advisory Committee, that might change with the new mandate letters. One of the things was that we are to seek out intermittent use of the downstairs and to come up with a length of term that any one individual can use the space for. So that's my mandate letter that we're going to be discussing a little bit later. However, we're doing, we're talking about this before, and it seems like although although Chair, you have a mandate letter, don't worry about the people that are in the back. That concerns me. We have had from the time that the first paintbrush hit the building, which they did a fantastic job. We've had the interest come directly to the Market Square Committee to ask what we're going to be doing to space. And they've asked if they could have the space. And we've out now said no. And that was at the at at the committee level. As you're aware, we, the committee structures need work and it should have came to council, all this sort of wonderful stuff. But it's council direction to have that area as a flex space, if you will, and not have a permanent tenant, if you will. That concerns me. As far as the Market Square, we've had discussions on this before. It is, it is the recommendation, as you know, to council from the Market Square Committee to not run, not have not have the town to run the farmer's market. And I appreciate the chamber stepping up and coming and putting in the request to do that. But we never did once go out for a call for action to to any of the community. Not apples to apples, but we most certainly wouldn't go and buy a new plow truck without going out and seeing what's out there for us. So that concerns me on that. And we've had that discussion before. It concerns me that on the Market Square Committee, we were talking about not having anybody on the third floor. Third floor would be offline. And here now we're opening it up. We talk about the recent donations and stuff. And once we open up for one, we have to open up for all. So that concerns me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Penal. Councilor Shank.
I don't know if Chris or Matthew can answer this, but looking at your top view of the Town Hall, the CAO's old office and Michelle's office, that that's basically on the first floor, correct?
Yes, Councilor Shank, that's correct.
And then to the left, that was, you know, the photocopying and everything else. That's the printer room and the back office that's going to be a washroom. According to this.
Yes, Councilor Shank, that's correct.
Does anything in this agreement give the chamber the rights to the this floor here?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the agreement itself contemplates intermittent use of the boardroom on the third floor for chamber meetings, not on Tuesdays, any Tuesday, and subject to the municipality's booking system. It's also built into the agreement that at any time, should the town wish to use that room for any reason, that we would receive priority. With respect, just circling back on a previous comment about the office or the the use of the first floor, I I appreciate that. I'm personally less concerned about that particular space because it is blocked off and and in the corner. But I think I think I've answered your question, Councilor Shank.
This will be after construction, this will be closed off, so nobody will have access to the rest of the first floor, correct? According to this map, because the green line is indicated rear entrance, or is that going to be? You know, even though they, I'm just thinking about security reasons. If you have the red space and the blue space, all right, because the blue space is the washrooms. Now, is that going to be open? That any, you know, somebody comes in, says, oh, I need to use the washroom, and then they go, then they can have a free fall for everything that's on the first floor. But I'm just thinking, security, what Councilor Penala said, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to think of when under construction, will there be a barrier there that the chamber uses? And then you have the washrooms here, and then when you have other events, then you can open up that door for them to access the washrooms. Is that something like that going to happen?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll invite the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture to chime in after if he has something to add. So during construction, nobody's going to be in the building. And what is contemplated and in the agreement is the chamber would have the ability to use the washrooms and their space, not the rest of the building unless they've booked a boardroom through the booking system. That any chamber business would be by appointment only through the rear door. One of the another main reason of that is it's not, it's not fully accessible. So it wouldn't represent an accessible space. So that's why in in the agreement is it's built in by appointment. And I anticipate that you know, on regular days, there would be a barrier from the rest of the facility other than the bathrooms and the office space that would be contemplated.
Yep, go ahead.
So my question is to rest of council is, do you want to have, you know how much? How many people? It's not like everybody's been bounding the doors in to operate a farmer's market. And I would love nothing better to see a farmer's market back into the community. When I was a small kid, I remember everybody used to work Wednesdays only to noon because it was market day. You know what I mean? And there was a lot of areas that were shut down at noon. You know, I used to get my steaks at Tar Brady's butcher shop downtown. So all I'm saying is, is if we could get some of that backfield back, you know, I mean, hey, as far as I'm concerned, there's nobody better better off than I can imagine would be the chamber. There's a whole bunch of business people that would like to go ahead and have this at the same time, help them out, help the municipality out. So that's my feelings on.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. I'll go to Deputy Mayor Calver and then I'll go to Councilor Norrie.
Thank you through your worship to Mr. Grant. Have we done an idea what it's going to cost to do these renovations? Because on a five year deal, we're bringing in $10,000. I just wondered what the what the cost is going to be to do the renovations.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll invite Mr. Brown to weigh in. So the renovations, as I understand it, outside of the remediation of the building for some of the the previous building materials, which are considered hazardous if disturbed, completely safe if not. But other than that, the focus of the space was the communal space, which would be used for community groups and the arts groups. The costs for remediation are have been estimated. The cost for the larger remodeling, if you will, of the first floor is as yet to be determined because we don't have any design specs for that.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Okay, I just one one last question. Do we know what the chamber was paying for rent prior or what they're paying for rent currently?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I do not have that offhand, but I'm not sure if they'd be able to tell us what their current rental rate for where you're at now. Fair enough.
Thank you. And for the folk. For the folks at home that probably couldn't hear that, it's all in, I think, Ken, $230, your current accommodations. Am I correct there? Yep, great, thanks. Just just so the folks at home could hear, because they won't be able to hear you unless you're up in front of a microphone. That's fine. You can stay there. So Deputy Mayor Calver, did that answer that question?
That answered that question. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Norrie.
Thank you, your worship. I brought this up a long time ago, and I'm just hearing all these issues, boardrooms and that. Instead of going up four stairs, why don't we go down four or five stairs? Use the old lunchroom that could be a boardroom for them too. There's two washrooms down there. You put another, all we have to do is add a door past the washrooms. They've got a secure area. We can lock the first floor, the second floor. And that could be a nice area. And it's quite large, that lunchroom. So go down four instead of up four. And then you've got washrooms, which you don't need to get porta potties because you have two there. Problem solved in the summer. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilor Norrie. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So I would say that the agreement as it stands is a recommendation and any amendments to the agreement is the privilege of council.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there anything else before I weigh in? Go ahead, Bill.
I certainly want to see the farmer's market return out here, but I do have concerns about. I concur actually with Councilor Penal as far as the town and the rental business. That's certainly been the past, been a problem. 170 a month is, I'm not so sure that would even cover the utilities. Maybe it would, but it's it is again, it's part of taxpayers' money. I'm also concerned about if we take up that space down there, what we're is it going to affect what we're doing with the rest of the downstairs? I'm also concerned with the boardroom usage up here. I don't think anyone should have free access to the upstairs floor here and all. So I've got those issues that I'm in my head that I'd like to get past.
Great. Thanks, Councilor Mark. Go ahead, Matthew.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. If there are areas of concern with the specifics of the agreement, it is always council's privilege to identify those particular areas and to direct the Chief Administrative Officer to reengage in discussions with the Chamber of Commerce to address areas of interest or concern. Should that be the will of council?
I'm going to go Deputy Mayor Calver, and then I'll go to Councilor Penal, and I'll go to Councilor Hicks.
Thank you through your worship. I got to agree with with Councilor Norrie here. I mean, that makes total sense. The upper floor is sacred. It's extremely sacred. This is where council happens. This is where it's happened. This is where it should happen. And nothing else should be really upstairs other than council and council business. If we ran with Councilor Norrie's, we could be at very minimal layout for closing things off, securing things, because we really may not have to disturb any of the the drywall, the existing drywall. We may just have to add existing barrier walls and lock a few doors and problem solved. There's your basement downstairs. Yeah, if 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 we were going to do an agreement, that's that's what I would like to see amendments. And that's only if we're doing the agreement. And there's a lot of other concerns out there as to why we should or shouldn't. So but I agree with you, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver. Go ahead, Councilor Penal.
I think your worship through you, Matthew, we we you mentioned it, but we skipped over really fast about the accessibility issues of it and and the rear entrance type of thing. If if it is the will of council tonight to to vote on allowing this to happen, I believe that the only way that council should ever deal with the accessibility issue of of this building is to have the ramp in use and come through that front door. If that's the case for if it if the chamber needs it, because for us to put any monies into a lift or or anything like that in the back, it's just I I can't see it when we have the front. So I just wanted to put that out for council too, that if there is a a need for accessibility, that we would use that ramp, which we're having fixed, the whole area that's there, be be not very fiscally responsible for us to fix up the front and tell somebody they couldn't use it and then put a lift or something in the back. So thank you.
Good, Mr. Grant, then I'll go to Councilor Hicks. Yeah, good, uh, Mr. Grant, then I'll go to Councilor Hicks.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilor Penal, I agree with you. Um, it's not contemplated that staff would recommend, um, uh, installing accessibility, um, infrastructure in the rear entrance, um, not the least reason of which it's not very wide. Um, and so the idea for, um, by appointment only is, is it's, it wouldn't be necessarily open to people walking in as they might see fit, just simply because it doesn't meet the accessibility, uh, requirements. Um, also, it would require, um, individuals to be going through space that is meant, um, and has been identified as community group and, and, um, what, community use space. Uh, so that was the, the rationale behind, uh, that language in the agreement.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Hicks.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. Um, what is the out clause? Is it 90 days or 60 days? I'm looking through, and I don't know if I'm just not seeing it. I'm assuming there is one in the agreement somewhere. Uh, that's my first question. Second question, they're providing their own internet, correct? They have no access to the town wifi?
Uh, so through, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, uh, internet is not contemplated, and they're either offered or requiring them to have it. It would be my expectation that, uh, they would have their own internet. Uh, the out clause itself, uh, speaks to the viability of the market. Um, so should the market, um, be unsuccessful for whatever reason, then, um, there would be the ability, uh, to, um, to rescind the agreement. Uh, but it doesn't necessarily speak to a 90-day or 60-day out clause. The, um, the thinking behind the agreement was, uh, building a market would take time. Um, you know, uh, a chamber and investing their time would require, uh, a partner that would, um, offer some degree of certainty. Um, and that is the rationale, um, behind, uh, the five-year agreement, and then also, uh, the language between the viability, uh, viability of the market.
Yep, go ahead, Ange.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. So the two are linked though, like, the way I'm reading this is the chamber will run the market, and based on that, they will be given a space to rent. But if the market does not succeed, and I'm not trying to set a prophecy in motion here, but does that mean that the rental agreement for the office space would become null and void? Or like, are they linked together? Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, to Councilor Hicks, yes, that is the intent of the agreement. Um, we're happy to make the language clear. Um, and in the discussions and drafting the agreements, um, uh, with the clerk, um, that specific conversation was had to bring it all into one agreement because they're intrinsically linked.
Yep, go ahead, and then I'll go to, uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead, Ange.
So when I look at the, the blueprint that's laid out, it, to me, it's very clear. The green line is the stop, do not pass. It's locked by town. Nobody goes past that. If there's an event going on in the common space and somebody has made an appointment to come and visit the chamber for a meeting, and they need to have wheelchair accessibility, the only way right now and in future is for them to utilize the ramp at the front of the building and to come through the communal space, which is not fair to the people that have booked the space for, for their use. So I think everyone agrees with that. You know, if somebody's having a wedding or a, a square dance or something down there, that you, you don't necessarily want strangers coming through your event. Um, the bathrooms downstairs and the lunchroom, I think that bears exploring because it does then fully make the third floor off limits. There's windows, it's not, it's not bad down there, um, as long as you're not more than probably six, five at all. Uh, but yeah, I, I'm in favor of the market, and to date, you can read every, all kinds of stuff on social media, but this is the only group that has stepped up with a plan. So, I mean, they've taken the initiative, so I, I give them that. Thank you.
And I think Madam Clerk wanted to weigh in.
Sorry, just to go back to an earlier question, through your worship, uh, there's termination language in Section 11 and Section 15. Uh, Section 11 is unlikely to be needed, but it's if there's an egregious breach of contract, we can just cancel it. And 15 is the bit about if the market no longer exists, or if we need to do a substantial renovation and they can't be in the building.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, Deputy Mayor Calvert, then Councilor Norrie. And then I'll weigh in.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. Um, the farmer's market, is that something that's intended to run every single weekend?
Uh, to, uh, to you, through, uh, through the mayor, to the deputy mayor, uh, my understanding is we've made it available for two days a week. Um, and my understanding is the target is, is two days a week.
And any two days a week?
Uh, not Tuesdays.
No, not Tuesdays, obviously. No, I just, you know, if somebody else has the Market Square booked for something, I want to make sure that it wasn't gonna, we're just not going to limit it to that, so. Awesome, thank you. I, I'm, yeah, good to go.
Councilor Norrie.
Yeah, I'll need help with this, but I don't want to, I'm, I'm behind the chamber for this. I mean, I used to love coming to the market. Just a few years I've lived here, but is there any way without, unless they're be getting evicted from where they are, that we can bring it back the 25th of March with a secondary plan of the basement? We can compare the two and see if that works out? Just thoughts? I'll let Madam Clerk, uh, word properly if it goes by way of motion, but thank you.
Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, short answer to you, Councilor Norrie is yes. So, uh, my advice, uh, to members of council would be, whatever agreement we land on, it's important that as a group you feel comfortable with it. Um, this is, let's, uh, this is first draft. Um, uh, the building, um, is your responsibility. And, uh, if there are other avenues that you would like us to pursue in discussions with members of the chamber, we're in your hands. Um, and, uh, you know, they've been, they've been good partners to work with. Um, I'm quite certain they are familiar with your concerns. Um, and, uh, I would be more than happy to take direction from council to revisit, uh, the agreement, whether it be, um, not entertaining anyone on the third floor. Uh, you know, exploring use of the basement, uh, or any other provisions, uh, in terms of, uh, use of space, uh, if it's already being rented, but whatever those concerns may be. Um, to me, it's important that, um, when you look at a final agreement, um, and, uh, you know, through discussions, if we're able to arrive at one, that you feel comfortable with it. Um, that would be my number one, um, area of interest. Uh, so, um, short answer, Councilor Norrie is yes, and I'm in your hands.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. If there's nothing else before we entertain a motion, I'll, uh, comment, but go ahead, Bill.
I just, thank you, Mayor. Like, I want to see the farmer's market out there, and I want to be able to help out the Chamber of Commerce because they're a good organization. And I just wish we could work out a few of the fuzzy areas that, because there is something like Councilor Hicks pointed out, if, if we had to have handicapped access at the back, for whatever reason they need it for, they're going to have to come through. And that's probably going to be on a Saturday, and that's probably when another group is going to have it rented out. So it, it could be some conflicts there. Potential. I mean, I, I know they're not going to have a lot of handicap people going there on, on a Saturday, and maybe, maybe their offices even close on a Saturday, I don't know. But if we could just perhaps have a list of things we're concerned about, and see if we can work on those and, and get through them, because I would like to see it happen. I just, there's, there's some issues that I'd like to see ironed out, that's all.
Thanks, uh, Councilor Martin. Councilor Hicks.
Good idea. Thank you, Your Worship. So I'm going to come out of left field on this one. Is there any reason, and I saw this in, in the staff report, uh, an alternative option is the use of 12 Market Square, which is a fully functioning building, little dusty and dirty right now, but nonetheless, um, there's no asbestos in it that we know of. It has functioning bathrooms, and it also has a beautiful accessibility ramp rolling right up to the front door. So if we're going to do this, is there a possibility of starting off with the office at 12 Market? Well, we sort out what's going on over here in Town Hall. It's still right here. And the beauty of that building is there's a rear entrance for the time being where the bathrooms are easily accessible, and you can block off the rest of the building during market days. So it's, I'm just. And there would be a boardroom of, uh, space available for a boardroom at 12 Market as well. I'm just throwing it out there. We're not using it for anything else right now. I know it's technically up for sale, but just a thought.
Thanks, Ange. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I recall that council had a conversation about that, um, at a previous council meeting. Standing direction for staff is to sell the building, uh, with funds to be directed towards, uh, the remediation, uh, of this building. Um, in discussions with the Director of Parks Recreation and Culture, I am confident that those funds will be required to complete the work, particularly the outside area, um, in, in order to landscape architecture and that sort of thing. Um, and so it was presented as, as an alternative, but that would require council to, uh, change the direction that, that staff currently has, um, to, uh, sell the building and to use the funds and direct it towards the ongoing work.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Not to belabor this, so all I'm saying is, I, I concur with Angela. I think all I'm saying is still have it for sale, but it's being occupied. And all right, and, and none of the sales happen overnight. It might not, it might be not, sale might not happen for zig months, it might not happen for a year. That funds there need to go ahead and do this. And the immediate point is there are concerns that everybody held, it was washrooms and everything else that Angela had just said. So all I'm saying is, is that still have it for sale. That's your number one goal, to sell it. But in the interim, is that they pay the utility cost, or they're heating the hydro, whatever they want to use out of it. All right, and you know, that agreement, you'll have to work with them. All right, whatever that figure is, you know, if they leave the lights on and they want to use it seven days a week, well then, they'll have to pay that bill. But point is, is I think that alleviated a lot of the concerns of Council Penal and everybody else that had. So I think that was, you know, I'd like to listen to what the mayor has to say.
I'm going to weigh in here shortly unless anybody else has got anything else to say. Let's deal with the easy thing first. The Chamber of Commerce want to use a boardroom. There's nothing to say that they can't use the flex space that's downstairs once it's been revamped. It's a flex space, it's open to anybody that wants to use it, anybody that wants to book it. So if they need to have a board meeting of some form, you can book the place downstairs. There'll be some tables and chairs there, and you got every board meeting. That keeps the upstairs completely, um, away from anybody else. We put a lock on the door, it's done. I, I think you could probably work with that. Um, secondly, I, I don't think you're getting thrown out of the place that you're in, and you're a block away. Um, I don't know whether we need to move you one place and then move you to another place. That doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me, whether it's for three months, six months, or a year and a half. So if you're quite comfortable where you are until we can get the, uh, the space that's downstairs available, um, I don't know if you want to move three, four times before you get settled in somewhere. So if you're comfortable where you are, let's make you move once as opposed to two or three different times. It'd be my humble, my humble suggestion. Um, as far as the, uh, the space downstairs, obviously, um, there's going to be some issues with the basement. The basement isn't accessible, for one thing, and the bathrooms downstairs aren't accessible. So even if, um, people wanted to use the bathrooms downstairs, I don't know if anybody has seen the bathrooms downstairs. They're not accessible, and so there's going to have to be some, some serious work that would have to be to make that space usable. Whereas if we put the bathrooms on the main level, they're going to be used for the flex space, the bathrooms are going to be used, they're going to be built so that if somebody needs accessible bathrooms, they will be there. It doesn't really make any sense to revamp the accessible bathrooms downstairs because we can't get people downstairs anyway. As far as the space upstairs, I mean, I mean, it really is quite simple, as far, and at least in my simple little mind, it is, is that we put a locked door upstairs, so you can't get anybody upstairs, you put a locked door, locked door downstairs, so nobody can get downstairs. There's going to be a locked door where the green line is on the diagram that's, uh, in the, uh, report that we're looking at. It'll only be, uh, that flex space is going to be open to whoever rents it, whoever signs up to use it, whether it be one day, two day, five day, seven days a week. Um, it'll be done through booking, booking, the same as we do everything else. And, uh, I'm sure if the chamber needs a boardroom, they could probably use that easy enough because they'll, they'll work around the few folks that are, uh, that are booking that. Um, there was one another, um, there's another matter that I was going to speak to, but has just slipped my mind. Um, the market. These folks are willing to try and do a market one or two days a week. They don't hold the monopoly on the market in the Market Square. That leaves at least another five days a week, maybe six days a week, depending on how well, uh, the Chamber of Commerce gets up and running with respect to their market. It enables anybody else in this community to hold a market in the Market Square that will have access to washrooms, hopefully on our main level. And it doesn't have to be a farmer's market, or it could be just about any kind of market anybody wants to do. However, I, I don't think there's anybody that is suggesting that the Chamber of Commerce is holding monopoly on markets that happen in the Market Square. And a prime example would be, um, there was a barbecue, uh, uh, event that was planned. They may want to have it on a Sunday, they may want to have it on a Wednesday, but they can have it on whatever day they want, that the Market Square isn't booked with folks that are having a regular Market Square, or market in the Market Square, so, um, I, I guess with the greatest respect, I don't mind the floor plan that we're looking at. The office space, and for anybody that's seen that office space, I wouldn't say that it's expansive by any stretch of the imagination. Um, it, it, it's actually quite small. There's going to be doors to keep people from going to where they shouldn't be going. And, uh, and, and like I say, we may have to put some form of a gate or something in the front door. So if, if that flex space is being used by anybody that, that rents it, um, we're going to have to restrict access to upstairs from the front, uh, from front stairways. But that's, that's, again, once again, it's a, it's an easy type of thing to, uh, to fix. I'm hoping that we're not scaring the folks that are sitting in the bodying of the council chambers away because we've spent, uh, an exorbitant amount of time talking about how we can't do this as opposed to how we can. Um, I, I think it's marvelous. I think it's absolutely wonderful that, uh, you folks have volunteered to get this thing up and running. It's going to be a benefit to our downtown, it's going to be a benefit to our Market Square. Um, we will find a way to make it work, so don't run away and shut the lights off and, and say you'll never come back because we will find a way to work. It's just a matter of working through some, some, some small little issues. So I have no problem bringing back, if Mr. Grant wants to bring back a, a, uh, a report with a number of different options. Um, if that's, I mean, I don't think we're in a position to, uh, make any decisions tonight. However, if Mr. Grant wants to bring back another, a report with respect to the options that we have, um, that's, uh, I, I, I know we want to get this thing going on, I know that, uh, you folks want to get working on it. And, and there's nothing to stop you from working on the market end in itself. Um, I, I think we're all of the, uh, the opinion that it's going to be some time before we get the downstairs functioning to the way we want to get it functioning. I mean, we've got to do the, we've got to gut it first and get rid of all the asbestos, and then we'll, uh, you know, we'll rebuild it the way I think we need to rebuild it. But, uh, um, it shouldn't deter you folks from forging ahead with the plans for the market, I would hope anyways, so. Um, having said all that and rambling on far too off, too much, is there anything that come out of, uh, anything I had to say? Go ahead, Councilor Hicks.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, again, not to belabor it, but when you're looking at the diagram included in the report, and I think, uh, Mr. Brown can clarify this or agree with me, that where the red and blue lines are shown, that is the original exterior wall of the Town Hall. And it's a load-bearing wall, and it is highly unlikely, at least I wouldn't be voting in favor for it, to knock out that brick in order to gain minimal amount of space at an exorbitant cost. So those spaces defined by those.
So those spaces defined by those red and blue lines are hard lines. Those, they're not going to change. Correct?
Those are hard lines. That would be the addition that went on to, um, Town Hall, probably in the early 1900s. And so if you look at the, the diagram that's in your, um, agenda, uh, I'll use north just because it's the top, the top blue line, the green line, and then the red line would be the original um, structural wall of the original Town Hall. So it, it gives, it gives a bit of a natural barrier there anyways. Yeah, I, I don't think anybody, and I, I would agree with you that anybody that suggests we knock that wall out is, uh, um, not going to get a whole lot of agreement from anyone around here. So, is there anything that come out of anything that I had to say? And then we'll enter. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think what would be helpful, uh, is a motion to bring back a revised agreement. Uh, the, the main items that I heard, um, was, uh, an alternative full stop to the third floor, um, uh, and keeping that the sole purview of council. Some language around navigating conflicting use, uh, of the facility, I think I also heard. I, not clear on use of the basement. I, I would say there is not renovations contemplated for the basement level, uh, of the facility. And I respectfully, I would submit that I don't think the bathrooms are, are probably something that we would want to have. As for tenant use, um, but the, the two main areas that I heard, um, uh, if, uh, council is, um, uh, interested in, um, the arrangement in terms of the lease would be access to the third floor and, and removing that and, uh, providing an alternative and conflicting use, uh, of users, specifically user groups and, and chamber business.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I mean, that's, i- if we're going to bring it back, let's, let's explore all our options. What's, what it would be to, uh, transform, I guess, the basement into something that's functional. Um, I, I think it's going to lead, it's going to require some work, but, uh, if you can bring her back a report with respect to that, you can bring back a report with respect to, um, the use of 12 Market Square. Like I say, I, I know that we want to get that building sold. It's the last piece of property that we had, uh, under the, uh, the one motion, if I'm not mistaken, or under the one resolution that, uh, we're going to use to fund the restructuring or the refurbishing of, of Town Hall. I think if we bring back some options, we'll be able to give you some firm direction before we have a, uh, uh, an agreement in front of us, I think.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I think what I'm taking out of this, and I would, uh, appreciate direction on this, is uh, bring back a revised agreement that provides, uh, multiple options for council's consideration for the use of uh, this space on the first floor, uh, and/or, uh, 12 Market Square. And specifically, I think the changes to the agreement would, would be respect to the lease and not the arrangements that have been arrived at with respect to the operations of the market. I believe that's what I heard.
Madam Clerk, um, I'll give you an opportunity to weigh in on a possible resolution.
Through your worship, I don't know if council would want to do this as one motion or two separate motions. If there is a desire to give some concrete assurance at the meeting tonight that council does want to commit to some type of agreement, just not this specific agreement. Um, and the proposals around the operation of market, of a market, uh, are, are not of concern. You could certainly add language into this resolution, um, that council support in principle, uh, the draft agreement that was proposed, uh, but that council directs staff to report back with alternative options, um, for the use of 12 Market Square or the Town Hall basement and options to address the concerns raised about conflicting user groups in the space at the same time. That last bit was not well worded, but i- if you wanted that all in the same motion or if you wanted to have a separate motion on the question of does council support in principle the rest of the agreement?
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Councilor.
Take this under consideration, uh, after listening to everybody's comments and everybody's concern and everything else. It's a five-year agreement. It's been how many years that you haven't had a active farmer's market? Every other municipality has a farmer's market. As far as I'm concerned, it's going to be a five-year plan refurbishing the Town Hall. I, I agree and concur with the, what the mayor has said about the third floor, that it's out and what the deputy mayor said and whatever he else is. So just change the thing that you can't use the third floor, uh, uh, the boardroom. On the main floor, it's not going to be used every day. God, I hope it would be used every day and our dilemma would be that, oh my goodness, we're going to have to have a different spot. The basement, everybody knows the amount of infrastructure. I agreed with what Council Noria said, maybe using that at first, but then I went, oh yeah, accessibility washrooms up a cement ramp that's only two, not even eighteen inches wide and five feet tall. So we know if we don't have the money to fix up the basement, uh, you know what I mean? On the first floor, you should not going to be putting money in the basement. So why make the work on to guys that you know what the answer is already? So as far as I'm concerned, I agree with the agreement totally. Just take out the third floor boardroom. There we go. Buds your uncle done. Have a nice day because I'd like to have it in this century that they maybe if a willing party wants to do operate it, they do operate it.
I have one quick question and that's it. Yeah, just, just give me, yeah, go ahead, Ken. Come on up here. You're going to have to talk on the microphone though, so, um, we need the folks at home to hear what you got to say.
Now, we do require an area to meet. So if the third room, the third floor, um, meeting room isn't accessible, would we be able to use the space if it's not rented? Where are you going to rent for our to have? We have a monthly meeting. It's, uh, third Tuesday of every month from five to seven. And if we could exchange that for the space that you're going to be renting out anyway, then we're fine with that as well.
And, and really, Ken, that's, that's exactly what that space is to be used for. It's supposed to be used for a flex, flex, flex space with respect to, um, any user group that wants to try and use it for, for, whether it be an art show, whether it be a square dancing event, whether it be, it doesn't matter what it is. It could be a recreation event as well. That's what that space is. At least in my understanding is, is to be a flex space so that if somebody books it, they can use that flex space. And, and so you would be entitled, in my humble opinion, that if you need that space, have a board meeting that, um, you could book that. Not, not unlike booking the banquet hall at the arena, really. So.
We actually booked the boardroom that we use now when we need it.
Yeah. So, um, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Through your worship. So I guess the bathrooms we have were fine for years for staff. So if we're not doing major renovations to accompany this, do we need to have accessible bathrooms put in? Uh, it's not going to be open to the public every day. It's just, you know, appointment only type thing. They're going to be coming in for an appointment. Do we have to have, we've never had accessible bathrooms here before? Do we need it now?
Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, um, bathrooms are contemplated for use of the flex space. Um, that's something that was both in the market square recommendation. So I, I think those are on the table regardless of, of chamber occupying the space and, uh, the lease agreement as it stands contemplates, um, there would be occupancy after renovations had taken place, at which point I would anticipate that bathrooms would already be in place.
Okay, thank you. So when this comes back, could we get a, an idea of what it's going to cost for accessible bathrooms in? How much space is going to be required for that?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, that work is, is, uh, would not come back in short order. That'll be part of the larger scoping work of the interior of the facility. Uh, I would say that if I'm not mistaken, and, and Councilor Pennell can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but part of the recommendations from the Market Square Advisory Committee was to have, uh, accessible bathrooms put into the first floor of Town Hall, uh, to accommodate, uh, flex space. Uh, the area anticipated for those is in the back rear of the building, uh, where there is already water, uh, infrastructure available. Um, that happens to, uh, be close to, uh, the back office space that we're contemplating and, and council's discussing this evening about, um, uh, things for, uh, a space for the chamber. Uh, and it would be behind, uh, the hard infrastructure, which was the original exterior wall, which we anticipate to have a door. Um, so the office space and the bathroom space would be in the same area separate from, um, the large event space. Um, I think that might answer your question, Deputy Mayor.
Yep, thanks. Uh, is there anything else? Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead and make a motion so we can get this going. Uh, just make a motion that you go ahead and you're the revised document, the end of February, hopefully with the agreement that, uh, if a boardroom, the boardroom is needed, which the chamber has said that they use it on the first floor. All right. You know, it's, you know, they work it with through the bookings, exactly what the mayor said. And that we have the agreement that you just take out the third floor. All right. First floor gets locked off, exactly what the mayor's done and the way we go. That's my motion. If somebody wants to second that, then that'd be great.
Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have what you need?
So through your worship, uh, the motion is that council receive, uh, for information, the farmer's market operating agreement report further that council directs staff to revise the draft agreement to remove any use of the third floor boardroom and include, uh, rental of the main floor flex space, the same as any other community group for border and space and that that be brought to the February 25th meeting.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowber. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor, the discussions that we've already had? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion's carried. Thanks, folks. Good discussion. Uh, thanks, folks for, uh, coming out tonight. We will get there. Trust me, we'll get there. So thank you. Yeah, we're going to take a, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We've already been going at this for about an hour and 45 minutes and some of us are getting old. So we'll see you, uh, back about, uh, five to eight. Moving very well. Seeing none, I guess the first motion we'll look for is that council receive the Advisory Committee 2025 mandate report. So we receive that. And did you want to do those in separate motions as well, Madam Clerk? We just received the report, and then we'll receive, or we'll do a motion for each of the committees?
Through your worship, I think for this first motion, we can include receiving the report for information and approving the Arts Advisory Committee, and then each distinct item after that will be a separate motion unless there's any council wants to combine together.
That's exactly what we'll do then. So we'll look for a motion that council receive the Advisory Committee 2025 mandate report, and further that council approve the 2025 Arts Advisory Committee mandate letter and terms of reference moved by Council Norrie. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Culver. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the Arts Advisory Committee? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Next one is the 2025 Market Square Advisory Committee. Go ahead, Mr. Grant, and we'll go to Council Benau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as council will be aware, I would say one of the premier initiatives that is being undertaken this term of council is the refurbishment of Town Hall and the remediation of Market Square. And to that end, there is a Market Square Advisory Committee, which has the overarching task of providing recommendations to council, and they've already received the initial recommendations about the use of the facility and the direction that renovation should take. In the Market Square mandate letter, what I'm recommending is that they gather and analyze community inputs to inform the interior renovations of Town Hall. That they work with relevant advisory committees to gather and consider their recommendations on the renovation of Town Hall, and specifically, that would be the Arts Advisory Committee and the Heritage Committee. And develop recommendations for the terms of use of Town Hall They weren't 100% clear on what their specific roles were. I made some personal observations from a staff level that it was not ideal to have a council member chair the committee. It created a little bit of confusion, I would suggest. And the mandates, previous mandates themselves, didn't necessarily connect in with the larger business of the town. So it wasn't necessarily advising us on the business that council was doing. There wasn't necessarily a through line, if you will. So in looking at this, the advisory committee recommended mandates in terms of reference that you have before you. The terms of reference are largely the ones that you've seen before with some minor alterations specifically, including how finances are to be used, if indeed council provides an advisory committee a budget for a very specific project. And the mandates that I'm recommending are designed to fit in with priorities that I know council is already working on and work that is already on or scheduled to be on staff's work plan. The theory behind that is, as a smaller municipality, you pick some, a couple of projects and you gang tackle them. And that's generally the logic behind it. So I'll start off with the Arts Advisory Committee, which is the first recommended mandate on your list. And so what you'll see as my recommendation for the Arts Advisory Committee is assisting and by recommending art-related definitions to the Market Square Advisory Committee, which is the overarching committee providing recommendations to council on remediation of this facility. Make recommendations to the Market Square Advisor Committee on desirable needed amenities to be included in the interior renovation of the facility. So if you're going to host art space, and I would suggest arts includes culture and music and those sorts of things. But what do you need in there? And I think those would be recommendations that would be welcome. Recommend cost structures for artists and art-related groups for the use of Town Hall with the understanding that the Market Square Advisor Committee recommended using cost recovery as a benchmark. And make recommendations to Town Hall on the types of artistic and cultural events the town should seek to attract to Town Hall. And that could be both either in the interior of the facility or externally. Make recommendations on how the town can use its facilities to showcase work of local artists. And I would anticipate that would be the higher traffic areas, 99 Advance, Best and Bash Center, Town Hall. And participate in the planning and execution of the town's Culture Day event. Each mandate letter does provide advisory committees the opportunity to make recommendations to council on things that they think they might want to focus on. But they would need to come before you. And you would need to agree or disagree with those. And I think that's important, so we're all sort of going in the same direction. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions specifically on the Arts Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Counselor Norrie.
Yes, more of a statement question. We met on the 27th following this after they read them all, and I want to thank you. Took a while to get their heads around, and the big one was, we don't have a budget we can spend, or they don't. I think they figured it out. So we're having another meeting next Monday. We're speeding up a couple. And we're going to have it here so that they can get a focus on this place because they read about working with the Heritage Committee. And they've got their heads around the budget, so we're going to talk about music and bring something later, but as soon as we can. So, but overall, the committee was understandable and looking forward to this direction. So I move that we accept this or this letter.
Yep, great.
Whatever the wording is you want.
Yep, thank you, Counselor Norrie. I appreciate that. And I think what I'll do is for each committee with respect to the council member, I'll start with them as well, just like that, so that we get a good feel of what the committee is thinking as well. So is there any questions for either Bob or Mr. Grant with respect to the Arts Advisory Committee? It sounds like it's moving very well. Seeing none, I guess the first motion we'll look for is that council receive the Advisory Committee 2025 mandate report. So we receive that. And did you want to do those in separate motions as well, Madam Clerk? We just received the report and then we'll receive, or we'll do a motion for each of the committees?
Through your worship, I think for this first motion, we can include receiving the report for information and approving the Arts Advisory Committee. And then each distinct item after that will be a separate motion unless there's any council wants to combine together.
That's exactly what we'll do then. So we'll look for a motion that council receive the Advisory Committee 2025 mandate report and further that council approve the 2025 Arts Advisory Committee mandate letter and terms of reference moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the Arts Advisory Committee? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, opposed, motions carried. Next one is the 2025 Market Square Advisory Committee. Go ahead, Mr. Grant, and we'll go to Counselor Penau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as council will be aware, I would say one of the premier initiatives that is being undertaken this term of council is the refurbishment of Town Hall and the remediation of Market Square. And to that end, there is a Market Square Advisory Committee which has the overarching task of providing recommendations to council. And they've already received the initial recommendations about the use of the facility and the direction that renovation should take. In the Market Square mandate letter, what I'm recommending is that they gather and analyze community inputs to inform the interior renovations of Town Hall, that they work with relevant advisory committees to gather and consider their recommendations on the renovation of Town Hall. And specifically, that would be the Arts Advisory Committee and the Heritage Committee. And develop recommendations for the terms of use of Town Hall by arts and community groups with inputs from relevant advisory committees and members of the community. And I would say that if there were a committee that may wish to employ the use of subcommittees, this might be the one. I have been in discussions with the town clerk to provide a guiding document for exactly how that can transpire. With that, I'm happy to turn things over to Counselor Penau.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions for Matthew before we allow Counselor Penau to speak first? Seeing none, go ahead, Dave.
I thank you, worship through you. Thank you, Matthew, for that. Not really too much to say about it. I do know that the Market Square Advisory Committee is getting itchy to have their first meeting of 2025. And hopefully after tonight, after this gets adopted, that we can make that date and have a meeting so we can select a new chair. I'm totally 100% in favor of the new structure of having a committee member the chair of it. And then myself, just as council representative, which is going to be fantastic. And also, you know, time doesn't wait for anybody, and there's a lot of work to be done here. So now that we have a mandate, terms of reference, it's time to get going. Now I'm babbling, but it's time to get going, so I thank everybody and looking forward to that date.
Thanks, Dave. Is there any questions for Dave before we look for a motion? Seeing none, we have a recommendation that council approve the 2025 Market Square Advisor Committee mandate letter and terms of reference. Moved by Counselor Penau, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried. Next matter is the Municipal Heritage Committee.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. So the Municipal Heritage Committee is, to my understanding, the only legislative committee. And with respect to the Municipal Heritage Committee, I would submit the following for council's consideration within their 2025 mandate letter. Make recommendations to the Market Square Advisory Committee related to the heritage elements that need to be considered or included in the interior renovations of Town Hall. This is one of our oldest and most cherished buildings, and I think that would be appropriate. Provide a list and accompany explanations of Greater Napanee's most important historical people and places to assist the town in developing an official registry of those assets. And so I would suggest, I think that is important because if we are going to continue to promote the heritage of the community, it would be handy to have a registry of that nature to guide our work. Provide recommendations and advice to council on work it can undertake to raise the profile of known heritage assets in the public facilities and spaces that the town owns. And for a frame of reference, council will have seen the photographs that were at the last council meeting. And something of that nature could be those kinds of photographs ending up and things of that nature in municipal buildings, preferably high-traffic municipal buildings, so people can see the heritage, both visitors and residents alike. Continue to provide heritage expertise and advice to council as requested in line with Ontario's Heritage Act. There, in the legislation itself, there are heritage buildings and designations and the like. And that is your committee to provide you that advice. And plan and implement the Culture Day celebration with the assistance of the Arts Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions for Mr. Grant? Then if not, we'll go to Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there certainly isn't any massive changes in our mandate. I've said all along that our committee has functioned very well the last couple of years. And I think that was our conversation that we had. And of course, we're lucky enough, too, to have Madam Clerk as our staff member on the committee. So she keeps us on the straight and narrow, too. So, but, and most of the items in the mandate, I can assure you, we were probably going to get to anyways without this. But anyway, I agree 100% with what you've got here for the Municipal Heritage Committee. That's about all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Nope, thanks, Bill. Obviously, the Heritage Committee has a real soft spot in my heart as well. So is there any questions for Counselor Martin with respect to the Municipal Heritage Committee? If not, we do have a recommendation that council approve the 2025 Municipal Heritage Committee mandate letter and terms of reference moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there are no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried. Next matter up is the 2025 Recreation Committee. Go ahead, Matthew.
And thank you through you, your worship, to members of council. So for the Recreation Committee, I'm recommending in their 2025 mandate that they provide the following advice to members of council. Identify examples of successful recreational partnerships at other municipalities that the town of Greater Napanee may want to consider. And this is specifically with respect to third-party partnerships that might be able to provide recreation services in partnership with the municipality. Think of Boys and Girls Clubs, the YMCA, those sorts of things. There, it is anticipated in the portfolio of the Director Parks Recreation and Culture that at some point, within our means, we might be able to explore recreation opportunities. That they recommend incremental investments that should be considered to improve currently-owned recreational amenities. So things such as what amenities might we want to add to parks, playgrounds, those sorts of things for existing infrastructure and in consideration of current financial resources. Improve non-motorized water access in Greater Napanee's downtown area in a way that respects the current motorized access that already exists and seeks to avoid any conflicting use. And recommend any sporting events the town may want to consider attracting. And with respect in doing that, add low to minimal cost. And so those would be the recommendations for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions for Mr. Grant before we go to Deputy Mayor Calver? Seeing none, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Grant and I went over this a little bit the other day. We made a couple of little minor, minor, minor changes. I do like the idea of every year getting a different chair. It gives different people a different perspective, for sure. It's going to make the rest of the members, you know, on the committee, that's going to feel that much more useful and helpful, for sure. So no, I like all the changes you've made here, and it's black and white, it's clear as mud. And we're going to make, we're going to make things happen with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Is there any questions or comments for Ryan? Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
This is more of a, I'd like to also put a recommendation, but to the Recreation Advisory Committee that in working with Chris Brown, that a lot of the municipalities around us have an outdoor rink this year because we had a really cold winter so far that's made for excellent outdoor rinks. Loyalist has one, you know, they all have one. So all I'm saying is for the amount of kids that enjoy that, you know, recreation of playing hockey or learning how to skate or whatever. And I know the ice time is, you know, in steep demand in the arena, that on a winter like this, take a look at the feasibility or any possible way of where we could have maybe an outdoor rink for the, you know, for the kids of the community where they could go ahead and have a game of shinny or learn how to skate or whatever, just as an outdoor rink. I think it's an excellent idea, you know what I mean? Not everybody's going to drive 30 kilometers to my pond. So all I'm saying is it's something where we could go ahead and look into, or the recreation could look into.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. And I think during these discussions would be an appropriate time for members of council if they wanted to put forward a motion to add an element to a mandate committee for them to review for council's consideration. These are advisory committees that are here to advise you. And if there, if it is the will of council that they wanted something added to that, now would be the time.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Shank. I think, and I'll look to Madam Clerk, we could add, could we add if it seems to be the will of council that we add another element to the mandate letter? We could do it all in one motion if that's what we want to do, or do you want a separate motion to see how it goes?
Through your worship, I would recommend if council wants to make any changes that your motion would be to approve the mandate letter in terms of reference with an amendment to include, and then whatever other items council would like to include.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to include that. It's just that we've got some super staff here in this municipality. And I will give a shout out to Nathan and Chris that teach a lot of the kids. And then every Saturday, you know, when I have time to take my grandson, they're out there helping the little toddlers learn how to skate and having fun and contributing immensely amount of time for the kids. So when I saw that and how many kids were coming out really happy, that's, I thought, here, let's go ahead and promote this. It seems to be a lot of kids are enjoying it. So I would make that staff recommend, or make that recommendation if that's in agreement with the Recreation Advisory to go ahead and do something like that.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian. I was going to ask to see if you could fit that in. And I'll let, I'll ask both you and Matthew to weigh in.
Absolutely. No, I think it's a great idea, Mike, or Counselor Shank, for sure. We come up with a spot, we can build a rink.
Mr. Grant, did you want to weigh in?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So as I mentioned, it is the will of council to add things to the mandate letters. My expectation of staff would be that whatever recommendation were to come forward, they would give, they would also include that as a service-level discussion. And it would tell you what it would take to make that happen. And adding things into the mandate letter is your privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. It sounds like Counselor Shank wants to make the motion that council approve the 2025 Recreation Committee mandate letter and terms of reference and to also investigate or assess the possibilities of creating an outdoor rink. Is that similar to what you were thinking, Mike and Madam Clerk? Can you clean that up for me?
That's what I was thinking. It was just because right beside the Best and Bash Arena, I just said the other one. But when you come from the south side, you've got that green space where it's right there. You know what I mean? And you got the parking spot and the Zamboni can just zip it along and go and do the other side when it needs to be done. You know what I mean? And so that was my thought behind the thought process, so there we go.
Madam Clerk, do you have what you need for a motion?
Through your worship, I believe I do got the council approved the 2025 Recreation Committee mandate letter and terms of reference with the additional mandate item of investigating and making recommendations on outdoor rinks as a recreation service. Leave it a little broader there.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Does that, does that cover it, Mike? Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Could I just maybe ask Counselor Shank if he would allow an amendment on where the outdoor rink is going to be located? Because there's, I'm thinking there's a grad area down at the bottom of King Street. There's nothing, nothing down there but soccer fields in the summer and it's wide open in the winter. So just, thank you.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
So my motion, Bill, is just basically is just kick that to recreation. Then that committee will look into it and see what's the strategic because they're going to have to look at, how would you clean that ice down there? The power, this, that, and everything else. My only suggestion was, and there's tons of areas, I'd love nothing better to have it south Fred. You know what I mean? But the point is, is that's, they can go through all that legwork because where's the Zamboni, you know what I mean? All the other means of doing that. And Chris will look into all that, and you guys can go ahead and figure it all. I'll wear wet, whatever. Let's just see, get one going.
Yeah, and I don't think the motion is location-specific anyway. So we don't want to task staff's hands in selecting a, yeah. So it's, I'm sure they'll look at a bunch of different options, so, yep.
No, I just want to make sure it was wide open to all areas of Greater Napanee, including south of Napanee, to Counselor Shank.
Yeah, perfect, okay. I think we got a motion, we got a move or a second or Madam Clerk. If there's no further conversations or questions or comments, all in favor of the motion, opposed, motions carried. Next matter is the Waste Diversion Committee. Mr. Grant, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. At this point, I would bring to council's attention, and this will be discussed a little later in this discussion, is I'm also recommending a revision of membership for the Waste Diversion Committee to be more reflective of advisory committees more generally, which are based of citizens. You know, currently through evolution, the Waste Advisory Committee is largely made up of staff. And I'm recommending that we change that to be more reflective of the nature of advisory committees more generally. So for the Waste Diversion Committee, what I would recommend in a mandate letter and have is research successful operational waste reduction initiatives and recommend to the town examples from like-sized municipalities they may want to consider and adopt. Using the successful efforts of other municipalities as examples, identify amenities the town may want to consider installing at their facilities to encourage waste reduction by the public and by town staff. Research and analyze initiatives and educational efforts from other like-sized municipalities that have encouraged citizens to divert waste from municipal landfills and review and assess how other municipalities in Ontario are implementing and communicating changes related to the province's new extended producer responsibility legislation and provide recommendations to the town based on examples of other places. And so the through line in these recommendations is, what can we learn from other organizations and like us that we can adopt here? And how can this committee help us do that?
Great, thank you, Mr. Grant, and Counselor Martin.
I guess I'm up again for a second. Yeah, Waste Diversion Committee, I do agree with Mr. Grant that we need a new makeup of the committee. I'd like to see a cross-section of, you know, commercial, residential, industrial because the new recycle program is going to take in all of that, non-for-profits. There could be things affect all of those different areas. I would like to see a good cross-section of people. And I'm sure we'll be advertising for committee members in the future, so I'm hoping that people will step up and volunteer for the committee. And looking forward to your mandate on the Waste Committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Is there any questions for Counselor Martin? Go ahead, Counselor Penau.
Thank you, worship. Not, well, maybe Counselor Martin and Matthew. I'm just reading the terms of reference on here and have nine members, a council rep, and then eight members. I'm just wondering if we need to change that as what Counselor Martin was just saying is the cross-section of type of members that he'd want. And I was also concerned about how fast we go for a call for these members to submit applications because as we know, this is a transitional year with recycling and stuff. And I think it's very important for this committee to be, to be active.
Mr. Grant?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. I can say that this will be a subject of discussion at the senior leadership team tomorrow, should council wish to adopt this. I'll be able to follow up and let you know how quickly we could go out for a call for proposals. I'll leave it to the clerk to correct me if I'm wrong here. But it is the privilege of council to choose membership of their advisory committees. And so we would seek to advertise this widely. And then you could choose the makeup of that committee that you would like to advise you in your waste diversion efforts.
Great, thank you. Just as a follow-up, maybe when we go over for a call, we could have something like, what's your expertise? Or what's your history with waste management or something like that? So we, as council, could, it would help us with our selection. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penau. Madam Clerk, did you want to weigh in on?
Through your worship, I will note that I do believe in the terms of reference, as in all of the committee terms of reference. There is language about preference shall be given to compensation, but ultimately, appointment decisions are all at the discretion of council. But certainly, we can ensure that we ask targeted questions in the application that we post for committee members.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. And I, the Waste Diversion Committee is sort of a different one in the fact it was a carryover from last, from last term. And I think we just, at the time, we just carried over the members who were on that committee. And if memory serves me right, and sometimes it's not as good as it has been, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, when we went out to look for folks for that committee, we asked for some, and we did get a lot of people that had some real specialties with respect to garbage and recycling. So I'm hoping that when we go out to look for more members, Um, I'm hoping that uh, when we go out to look for more members. Uh, we're gonna get the same response that we did back in the last term of council. So, but that's just from memory and we can look that up later, but uh. That's from what I what I recall anyways, Bill. So. Having said that, uh. Madam Clerk, we do have a recommendation on council direct staff to change the structure of the Waste Diversion Committee to reflect the citizen makeup and structure of the advisory committee. While maintaining the same number of members and further that council direct staff to advertise. For new members as soon as possible. Is that recommendation still uh, close to what we're looking for?
Through your worship, I believe that it is. Um, and I. Sorry if I missed it. I believe we also need to approve the. Mandate letter in terms of reference, but those can definitely be combined into one motion.
And to approve the twenty twenty five Waste Diversion Committee Mandate Letter and Terms of Reference. Is there any questions or comments before uh? Or we look for a mover and a seconder on that motion? Seeing none, do we have a mover and a seconder with respect to that motion moved by uh, Council Martin, seconded by Council Norrie? Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, opposed, motion is carried. Uh, next matter is the Pool Advisory Committee and Mr. Grant, you're up.
So uh, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I would preface this by saying for many years I was a master swimmer and I'm a big fan of swimming pools. But that being said, I uh, I am recommending uh, that council dissolve the Pool Advisory Committee until such time that the town can afford. Uh, an aquatic facility and I I make that recommendation and I don't make it lightly. I would say I don't see a clear path. For the short to medium term. Where I believe uh, either from a capital perspective or an operating perspective that uh, an aquatic facility. Is within our reach. I I say that knowing that um, you know, having a a clear line of sight on the town's finances. Which are not terrible, but we're not wealthy by any means. Uh, I would say that I would prioritize uh. The the business that we currently operate, including um, unfunded capital. Like uh, such as uh, some of the facilities that are still being paid off. Resources to heavy fleet. Uh, and that nature and and having worked at a number of municipalities where uh, we owned one or more pools. It is not an inexpensive enterprise. I I recommend that uh, we dissolve this committee at this time. Because I I don't want to set uh, expectations for members of the community that um. That a pool is feasible on the horizon. Um, and that is why I make that recommendation today.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions to Mr. Grant? And I know that Council Penel is going to want to weigh in. Seeing none, uh, Council Penel, um, I'm sure you want to weigh in. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Everything I'm about to say, I say most respectfully to everybody. Sorry that this has taken so long to get to here, but uh, at our last meeting, I did. Give out a couple of handos. One was. Of shovel-ready building starts, uh, projects for housing. That shovel-ready and also a map of the land lakes area, which includes uh. Greater Napanee for how much uh, waterways that we have. I also want to apologize. I'm gonna take a few minutes to read something because I want to capture, make sure that I get my point across of where I'm coming with all this. And uh, here I go. So let me begin by sharing a bit about my personal connection with aquatics in Napanee. Growing up here like many others, I did not have the skills to swing a bat or skate. Thankfully, we had an outdoor pool. That pool gave me exactly what I needed to stay out of trouble and to find a passion. At just thirteen years old, I joined the Napanee Swim Team and some of you may recall recently a picture of me. From the nineteen eighties, uh, practicing the breaststroke circling around through the internet. I earned my first, I earned many first place ribbons and even a few seventh place. I share this story because I know that there is residents residents in Greater Napanee today, much like my younger self. Who are looking for recreational opportunities beyond softball and hockey, two sports which I mind, which Napanee has excelled in. Years later, when I became volunteering with the town of Napanee, I was invited to join what was then called the Pool Task Force. For over fourteen years, I've been committed to aquatics through various task force and committees. Today, I urge my fellow counselors to support me in keeping the aquatics committee alive and not vote to disband it. It is critical that our town continues to provide access to aquatics programs and facilities. Whether for learning to swim, exercising, or simply enjoying the water. I provided you with a map of the area, the history, the abundance of lakes, rivers and streams. With so much water around us, it's essential that the residents, especially children, have opportunities to learn this vital life skill. Early in my tenure at the Pool Task Force, the town had developed design drawings for an aquacenter in Conservation Park. Behind the library, which included a splash pad. However, the project would have required removing many trees and rerouting a stream from the golf course to the river. An approach that was far from environmentally friendly. In hindsight, if council would have approved that project, we might not even be having this discussion today. In March two thousand twenty forty, Aquatics Committee conducted its annual review and concluded that it had met its mandate. The committee requested funding from council. To continue the work to updating the feasibility study and acquiring design drawings. This request was denied in a five to two vote. With some of the members citing financial concerns, particularly the seventy million dollar wastewater pollution control plan. To address this, I'd like to clarify that the town has received over thirty million dollars in government grants for the wastewater pollution control plan. And while financing is still remaining costs. Financing remaining cost is necessary. This will be paid by the residents who use the water and sewer and water and sewer services. As for the claim that we cannot afford a pool, I respectfully ask, how can we know if we cannot? Without updating designs, cost estimates or feasibility studies. The committee pre-COVID information is outdated. Additionally, council recently approved the creation of a procurement and grant-seeking position. Yet we have not been able to utilize this role to explore alternative financing. Options for partnerships or for a pool. Napanee is growing. I provided you with a list of shovel-ready housing projects showing nearly fourteen hundred and fifty new residential builds projects. For completion by May, or sorry, by completion of two thousand thirty-one. Many of these homes will be purchased by people moving here from the outside area. These potential residents will evaluate our facilities and programs. When deciding to call Napanee home. Similarly, industries considering investments here will look at what we have to offer for the workforce. I want to take a moment and thank the past, current and future members of the Aquatic Committee for the hard work and the dedication to improving our community, our community. If council chooses to disband the committee tonight, it will almost certainly mark the end of the dream of one day having a pool in Napanee. I urge you to vote in favor for preserving the Aquatics Committee so that we can continue to. To this important work to keep the vision of aquatics facility alive for future generations. Thank you for your time and for your consideration. And then, so that's what I my my true thoughts I had to get out, but also. Prior to the meeting, I was given a brochure uh, from the Rotary. That showed that uh, Ontario needs more pools. And it was designed morally for mostly for upper levels of government and to get them to put more monies aside, and I think that that's. A start of uh, grant funding uh, going there. Recently, uh, council attended the uh SOS. Where they were having an open house and uh, it was attended by. By council members, mayor, our our then MPP, Rekrize, and the CEO of the uh, hospital, uh, Michael Bell. Uh, in in the conversations, it was agreed upon that we have an aging population in this town. And having a pool will def- most definitely help with uh, low-impact exercise for everybody. Our two thousand twenty-one census stated our population of Napanee, and that's in two thousand twenty-one. Was sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine with six thousand eight hundred sixty-eight homes. That's a change of six point two percent increase since the last two thousand and sixteen census. Greater Napanee has four hundred sixty-two square kilometers to pull people in from to use the pool and the median age is fifty. So with that being said, again, I mean everything most respectfully. But to disband a committee that has zero costs associated with it, has a zero budget. I think that we should leave it to, as Mr. Grant is saying. Doesn't want to wear out the committee and and things, and we know this can be a long time to have a pool. I think we should leave that to decision to the members of the committee if they wanted to continue or not. Other than staff time, um, there's very little expense to this committee. So. I thank you very much for everybody taking that time to listen to me. If you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Penel. Is there any questions for Council Penel or Mr. Grant with respect to um? Their presentations? Go ahead, uh, Council Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. Uh, Dave, I feel like I'm yelling at you. Um, you've had discussions with your current committee. I'm assuming that that's taken place and you've told them what's what's coming. Or what's on the table for tonight. Are they all willing to stay engaged in this?
Uh, thank you, Council Hicks. Um, there's uh, definite rumblings of uh, zero confidence from council. Why would they want to continue to do this? And that is them airing their frustrations. But uh, yes, there is still a will to to continue, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hicks. Is there any other questions or comments for uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Culver.
Uh, thank you through your worship. So Dave, on your 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 committee or council, Phil. You got a lot of long-term, like longstanding members that have been on board since day one. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, the deputy mayor, yes, there's uh, actually members on the committee that have predate myselfs. Uh, that's uh. My involvement in it. So they've been around a long time. With uh, some of them even having that being involved in the design of the uh, pool I talked about for Conservation Park.
Okay, thank you. Just. Reading through, I mean, they've been involved for a long, long time and they're they're still involved. So I don't see a burnout happening there.
Yeah, that's correct. They also see the vision. Uh, for Greater Napanee and it is growing. And uh, like I said earlier. I mean, Napanee is known for softball and and hockey. I mean, well, look, we just asked for an outdoor rink. You know, there's uh, there's that, but um, later on tonight, we're gonna be talking about uh. About putting money in the budget for a soccer field. Uh, so there is other appetites for other sports and recreation other than hockey and. And softball. And um. It's it's definitely not a moneymaker. I understand that, but it's a quality of your life. And uh, I know before people say that we can't afford this, I want to just point out that in our budget. That's combined with uh, parks, recreation and culture. It's running a deficit of two, two million six hundred and twenty-four thousand, hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's coming from the taxpayers to. To support those programs and that's after what the income is. So. That's not, to me, is is not not uh, affordable either, but it's something that we continue to do. And I I do believe that offering uh, something else to. Has been mentioned to both of our aging community and also to uh, to the new visitors. To attract them here and and also let's not forget about the lifesaving skills. I mean, we have that river that cuts through our town. If you look at that map, which I invite you to keep, um, there's many, many, many bodies of water in in our area.
Thank you, uh, Council Penel. Go ahead, Council Norrie.
Yes, I have to agree to uh, to keep it going. I mean, if we let it die, it'll die. There's a lot more government agencies coming out with elections coming. Maybe get you involved in delegations with other council members down the road once you have your plans, but if we let it die, it dies. So. On the note of the SOS, being the uh, committee member, I've talked to Mr. Bell quite a bit and he arranged for a lot more space for us because he says the seniors are healthy. They use the hospital less. So swimming has been proven for that. So. I think we have to keep it going and uh, look. And fingers crossed that they can come up with something, whether it be. You know, grants or whatever, but if it dies, then nothing happens. So I'm in favor of keeping it.
Thank you, Council Norrie. Council Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, this is more of a statement than a question as well. I I I agree with the. Council Penel that we need to keep the dream alive. And certainly I I hope his uh, committee members are willing to. Still put in the effort. Uh, maybe we haven't encouraged them, but uh. I I think everybody knows we can't afford as a community to put the pool in without grants, but. I think we need to get to a point where we're. Ready to apply for grants. I I'd really like to see a step up. To that goal, whether, you know, whether it comes sooner or later, but um. As a father, I mean, I had two children here who got their uh. Swimming certificates over here in the Rotary Pool. And um, at the time, we had two pools. We had an indoor pool and we had an outdoor pool. Unfortunately, at the time, there were some forces in town that. Didn't want to make the pool look like it was viable. I could tell that as a as a. As a parent, as a taxpayer. And uh, unfortunately, we lost both pools at the same time, which doesn't make any sense whatsoever, but it did happen. And but I think one day. We're gonna get to a point where. A pool is gonna be viable again and. I I think with some government help, and I think that might be not too far around the corner, actually. And especially with um. Elections coming up right now, there there may be some goodies thrown out there. So. I I'd like to keep the pool committee alive and uh. I'd like to encourage them to uh, put forth some ideas where we can get one step higher. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Martin. Uh, Council Shank.
I. I'd love to have a pool myself also. It's not, it's not the building of it. It's the maintaining, it's the operational. Loyalist, I think, loses, I don't quote me on the number, but close to half a million a year of operating it. You can you can find it. My grandkids, they take their swimming lessons in Pecton. Belville had been in that pool. It's great too. There is other access, but when the YMCA closes the pool, just coming off a Taylor kid, because he couldn't make a goal, but. You know what I mean? This is is the luxury, but at the same token is, I don't want to give. I don't, you know, if you want to continue and still have it, sure, but I don't want to give anybody false hope. That, yes, in the near future, we're gonna have a pool because. We have a hard time funding our 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 large fleet to snowplow the roads, all right? So you gotta have, be able to snowplow the road. To even to think about getting a pool. So all I'm saying is is I I don't, I do not. To belate anybody that wants to have their passion or anything else, or if they want to look into. You know, having the swimming lessons in in Hay Bay like they used to do in our neck of the woods. They used to have it at uh. At at the park, at Loyalist Park there. They used to be, there was lots of other functions of doing it, but I. I just know. How much money we have today. And for the foreseeable future, for until we have. The debts paid. The infrastructure that is needed to operate the municipality, you know what I mean? They're gonna be our number one goals. It's not so much building it, it's the maintaining and looking after the operational cost. That's the only thing that you have to understand. That's gonna be yearly payment, you know what I mean? So I I I understand that, but I I if somebody wants to continue and 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 still look at other ways, or if there's possibility of things. Because you know fiscally. Way candidate is right now. And when the election is coming on, I, the days of the money go doling out is gotta stop or you're not gonna have anything left. So you know the those days, but that's just my optics optics on it. Now, I've been wrong before, but. I'm not gonna belabor anybody if they want to continue and I'm not gonna say no to anybody that wants to volunteer their time.
Thanks, Council Shank, Council Penel.
Uh, thank you, worship. Through you, I'd just like to address a couple of things that Council Shank said, which are all viable and and I agree with you. It's a very expensive endeavor. Uh, prior to COVID, we had a handshake deal with uh, with the YMCA uh, Western, which was was out of Belville. And uh, when COVID stroke is striked, sorry, that's the right word. You can only imagine what COVID did to the YMCA's model as well. So that's uh, that went. With everything that uh, COVID did, it put everything on hold. See, one of the things is that we have no idea what those costs are, and this is what the the uh, with council's approval. To put into a mandate letter for the pool committee to find these things out. But one of the things that we did do. Which I'm pretty proud of, uh, when we did our annual review of our mandate. Is uh, instead of saying that what we did for a mandate, we we constructed a a letter that all of council had seen. Where we took what the mandate asked us to do and what we actually did. And uh, we we surpassed everything that we were asked to do, but then we asked for recommendations and. But then we asked for recommendations and some of the recommendations was to look at sourcing some way of providing aquatics for the residents of Town of Greater Nappany, which included transportations to these pools that are outside of our area. And nothing had went any further from that. So at the least, if that was what was in our mandate for the pool committee to source that type of thing, to be able to provide some way that the residents of Town of Greater Nappany can have feasible access to these aquatic centers until we can eventually one day have our own facility. We're not saying that we need to have a pool or want to have a pool during the mandate of this council. And I'll be quite frank with you, probably not the next one either. But it is something that we should keep alive and work towards. And one day, we'll have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pennell. It's Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you through your worship. I have to agree with Councilor Pennell. We're looking at different alternatives for coming up with transportation, which, you know, we could end up providing, you know, transportation to, say, Loyalist when they get their pool up and going or Pecton or, you know, these other places. But, you know, we might be able to put something together with transportation. And maybe, Dave, Councilor Pennell, at some point, we should work together with the rec, take a look at this and see what we can do.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver. And you kind of took my thought right out of my head, is maybe incorporating this into the Recreation Committee as opposed to a standalone committee, but go ahead, Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, worship through you. As we've seen tonight in the mandate letters that have been presented to us, we have cross committees working all together. And we would love that, to have other people working together on this as well. And as the mayor said, this is something that should be looked at. So thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. If it's the will of council, what I think I've heard is recognition that short to medium term pool infrastructure on our own steam is likely not possible. There may be a good opportunity to see what others may have done to access capital and other funds. But also, I think, you know, in the near term, near to medium term, is there anything within our means to give access to aquatics more broadly to residents of Greater Nappany? And with that in mind, should it be the direction of council? I would welcome a motion maybe to instill an aquatics advisory committee that may not necessarily be infrastructure focused. That may be a portion of the mandate, but also include access to aquatics more generally. And if that's the will of council and they so direct, I'm happy to return with a mandate letter for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I guess where I was thinking on it is something that the Recreation Committee could, if we're talking programming for the foreseeable future, is that something that could be absorbed into the Recreation Committee? I mean, it's a different creature, a different animal than infrastructure by all means. The old adage that if you build it, they will come. If you build the programming, is that the precursor to the infrastructure? Is that something that can be incorporated into the Recreation Committee? Or does it need to have a standalone committee to do programming? Is, I guess, my question that comes out of all those words.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. It would depend on the advice that council wants to receive. If council is interested in specifically looking at accessing recreational programming and aquatics, I would suggest that the Recreation Committee would be a place for that to live. If it would like a broader mandate to not only look at sort of that particular access, but also what is the way to also examine infrastructure and other opportunities that may lend itself to a broader aquatics committee?
Yeah, Councilor Pennell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. With listening to what you said, it probably does make sense to have the Recreation Committee look at having our residents have access to aquatics for that sort of thing. But I also think that with having the Aquatics Committee, we would work alongside with the Recreation Committee because there is some knowledge that we have and we can share and work with them on that. As we still go out and look at our neighboring towns and see how they have come together to get grants and work on providing actually the infrastructure as well. So I can see working together and I can see also the need for a standalone pool committee as well. Thank you.
Would that suggest that maybe swimming program, it could be a subcommittee of the Recreation Committee? So it stands alone on its own, but be part and parcel to the Recreation Committee? Is, would that be? Go ahead, Councilor Schenk.
So I kind of like the way the mayor's going with this topic. So the point is, is instead of having a Recreation or the Aquatics Committee just spinning their wheels, knowing that now and in the near future, the odds of getting, you know, just maintaining it, because everything serves delivery, everything that you want or people want, it costs money. And that's on taxes. And you know what, the way the taxes have gone the last so many years. And so the point is, is when you tie it in with recreation and then with recreation, they can go ahead and say, hey, what are the other options that we could do? You know what I mean? And with your experience, then you have that many more people that are in that recreation, have that same focus. You know what I mean? That they might be able to tweak it a certain way or tweak it a different way. You know what I mean? I'm not, we know what busing costs and stuff like this. But for, you know, if they want to go ahead and you want to find out if there's any available space or time slot that you might be able to rent at another pool to give that option out to other areas, you know what I mean? To the municipality saying, hey, our residents, you know what I mean? We've got this certain spot at such and such a time if you want to do laps or whatever. But all I'm saying is tying it in with recreation, you have more heads thinking about the same topic. You know what I mean? I just don't want to discourage any of the aquatic. And I think that's where the mayor's coming with also, doing it that way. So Jessica's got her hand up saying, I got a better idea.
Jess is going to make this all clear for us and I'll go to Councilor Pennell.
So through your worship, I would just note that there are a few different conflicting statements that have been made around the table. But in general, in the terms of reference that have been drafted, staff's recommendation is that your committee does not grow above nine people just because above that it becomes a little bit unwieldy to manage the meetings. One thing that some of our committee members have reached out about and we are going to be drafting some guidelines for them is how can they create subcommittees with membership from each of the committees with an overlapping mandate so that a smaller group can get together to discuss that issue and then go back to their bigger groups? And that might be something more in line with what's being discussed here. I just personally, from a meeting management perspective, would not recommend that you create an 18-member Recreation and Pool Committee. Or whatever our current membership numbers are at.
I guess, sorry, go ahead, Councilor Pennell. Did you want to go next?
Yeah, thank you. With that, through your worship with what Madam Clerk had said. So I might be the root of those conflicting stories because that's the kind of way I talk. But what I'd like to see is having the two different committees and we could, you know, much like what we saw in the other mandate letters, is work together with on certain things, but then carry on with our other. I'm still, I listened to what Councilor Schenk says, but I'm still going to advocate for our own Aquatics Committee to carry forward, to look at many different things that we'll have to sit down on a later date to put through a revised mandate in terms of reference on this. But my goal tonight was to seek the approval of council to keep the committee alive, but not to dive in too deep of the conversation we're having. So thank you. We can do it at a later date.
That's what we do, I think, Councilor Pennell. So I'm thinking maybe Mr. Grant, you'll probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just listening around here, around here, the conversations that are occurring is that I would suggest that maybe you bring back a report with respect to aquatics in the Town of Greater Nappany and give us some options with respect to what are the best options to try and address that. Go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I think if I'm hearing this correctly, I can give you some options, some of which have been discussed this evening. And also presents a draft mandate in terms of reference for an aquatics committee that is not specifically focused on infrastructure. I would note that any other mandate letters, and I would seek to do that in this mandate letter, to make it as realistic as possible. And my goal in drafting these for council's consideration was to have them outcome driven. And so I would seek to take the same approach here.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is, go ahead, Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Matthew, for that. I'd still like to have the vote tonight to see if we can continue with the Aquatics Committee. I have, I think I have enough votes today and I'd like to get this vote in before people change their minds or read that mandate letter.
We always entertain motions, Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that council approve that the committee be maintained, that the Aquatics Committee be maintained. Thank you.
And further, that a terms of reference and mandate be brought back for council's approval?
That's a great friendly amendment. Thank you.
I'm getting better at Jess. Councilor Hicks, you good with that friendly amendment? Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Next matter is the council, the flexible economic advisory process. Sorry, Mr. Grant, I think you're up for that one as well.
Not at all. So there is outstanding direction for the Chief Administrative Officer to review, I think, an Economic Development Committee. And this is following the Downtown Advisory Committee. My perspective and my recommendation to council, particularly given the economic headwinds that we're currently facing and in consideration of our core mandate that we consider having a process that gives us the flexibility to meet the moment, as it were. And so I'll preface this by saying, the town itself, we work with the County of Lenox and Addington as it relates to tourism, as it relates to economic development. But we do not have expertise specifically with tourism and economic development. Those would be things that we would go to a third party. I would say the one rider I would put on that is the area of economic development that we participate in is land development, tax policy, employer attraction. And I would say, coming back with a process that would outline how and where members of council could seek economic development or economic sustainability expertise, would give it the flexibility to seek everything from expert advice, from researchers at Queen's University to focus groups. Candidly, particularly with recent conversations, I don't think that anyone can predict what things are going to look like in the coming weeks and months. I think we have to remain flexible. We have to remain open and use all the tools in our toolbox, which could be expert advice, focus groups, public consultation. Certainly, I think that we need to seek that advice. I do think that we would want to not necessarily replicate focus on tourism or smaller scale economic development, which we do indeed work in conjunction with the County of Lenox and Addington on. But instead, focus our efforts in making sure that we have access to information and advice on an as-needed basis. And we can be responsive to the economic environment as it involves.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Grant with respect to this presentation and the economic advisory process? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council directs staff to develop a flexible economic advisory process in lieu of establishing another economic development related committee. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Councilor Hicks. Is there any further questions, comments or concerns with respect to that motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Next up, we do have a recommendation, Mr. Grant. I'll put the recommendation out there and then I'll let you speak to it. That following some feedback received from advisory committee members, that staff be directed to provide recommendations on the makeup and number of committee members of advisory committees and associated budgets of each committee prior to the end of this term of council. And further, that council approve training sessions for advisory committee members to focus on meeting processes, roles, responsibilities of committees, members, and guidance on adhering to their scope of work, that training be paid for through council's training budget. Did you want to comment on, or let's put the motion on the floor first and then we'll let you comment. We'll see where it goes. Moved by Councilor Schenk, seconded by Councilor Pennell. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Sure. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So on those two recommendations, one would be between now and the end of the term of council, just take a look at the makeup of the advisory committees, numbers of members, that sort of thing, to make sure that they are reflective of the level of membership that might be required. And we could bring that back for council's consideration. I think it's probably been a while since maybe we look at the overall makeup of the advisory committee membership. And so that is in response to some feedback that we had from some advisory committee members and as well as a housekeeping matter that I think would be appropriate. And with respect to training sessions, I would say that this was a piece of feedback that we got from a lot of advisory committee members. And what that looks like is training for staff and particularly, how do we make sure that recommendations find their way onto council agendas and there for debate? How do we ensure that staff members, you know, have the ability and the processes to, I guess, point out to advisory committees when they may be exceeding their mandate? And might be required to put forward a recommendation before they take on a body of work and bring it before this body for authorization to engage in that work? As well for advisory committees more broadly, giving them the opportunity to learn the things that you're doing right now in terms of meeting management, how to make sure that ideas are brought to the table, that they're voted on, that there's resolutions and that the process runs as smoothly as possible and that each committee is able to run them as smoothly as possible. And so those are the intent of both of those recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Hicks.
Thank you, Your Honor, Your Worship. Sorry, it's getting late. Mr. Grant, the training session that's going to be held, all committee members are invited to attend at the same time. And if that is the case, could we please allow maybe, I don't know, 15 minutes, half an hour, just for the various committees to introduce themselves to one another and have a bit of a mix and mingle? I think that would be a great start to this year's advisory committees, just knowing who everybody else is and what their mandates are and where there's overlaps and how they can all be working together. So I would just like to strongly promote that if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing none, if there's no further comments, comments, questions or concerns, we'll call for the vote, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion's carried. I think at this point, we'll take about a 10-minute break and then we'll get back at it and we'll see if we can clean up the rest of the stuff that we have. So thanks and we'll see you about 20 after 9:00. Welcome back, everyone, and thanks for your indulgence there. Next up on our agenda, we have noticed a motion section, and I believe Counselor Martin has a motion that he would like to make this evening. So Counselor Martin, whenever you're ready.
Would you like me to read the entire motion here?
Yeah, if you could, just so the folks at home can see it if they hadn't read the agenda, and then we'll look for a second.
Okay. The reason I put the motion on the floor was to review this motion, number 158/20, which reads that council accepted proposal from Axel Thesberg, outlining correspondence received at the special session of council on December 9, 2019, to end the five-year phase-in of method four from the Watson Report in 2019, which would result in a rural discount rate for policing costs of 9%, which is 5.5% over the 3.5% for the area rating of sidewalks, streetlights, and fire response. And further, this decision be reviewed during the next term of council, which is what we're doing tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Norrie. And Counselor Martin, I'll give you the opportunity to speak. It's your motion, so you have the opportunity to speak first.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to go back to 2015, when the council of the day undertook a taxation review. They hired a consulting company out of Mississauga at a cost of over $100,000 and struck a committee made up of three urban taxpayers, three rural taxpayers. And I won't get into the weeds with what went on, but it went on for over a year, or almost a year. Cost the town $100,000. And the result was to discontinue the discount and phase it in over five years. Then in 2019, the previous council, previous to this council, stopped the phase-in at four years, which resulted in a 9% surcharge on policing. If it had been allowed to go to the five years, it would have still been a 3.5% discount to the rural wards, which I believe the committee intended to go down to 3% anyway, so 3%, 3.5%, because I think they were going to introduce a surcharge on sidewalks, streetlights, and fire hydrants, which would be 1% on each one, which would be 3% discount. And that's what I believe the intention was. Sidewalk, I've always had a little bit of a problem with that anyway, because about 40% of the urban area doesn't have sidewalks. I could name off the streets, but I won't go into that because we're just debating the policing surcharge tonight. Anyway, the 9% policing surcharge was implemented by the previous council, like I said, which is 5.5% over the 3.5% for area rating on sidewalks, fire hydrants, and streetlights. Now, full disclosure, before I was elected to council, I watched these proceedings of both 2015 and 2019. I was sitting right over there where Les is right now, and the commander of the OPP, Ian Semple, stood right there, and he was asked if the policing was the same in the urban area as it was in the rural. And he said unequivocally, it is. So we have established by his admission, I think, the level of service is the same. The next day, I phoned the ministry, actually, and they were very helpful. Now, the first thing they tell you is, they won't give you legal advice, but they will point out several clauses in the municipal act. And they read these clauses out to me. And as a matter of fact, they read them, the gentleman I had was very helpful. He read it to me three times, and he told me to pay particular attention to the words "shall" and "shall not." And I'm going to paraphrase here because I don't want to read the whole clause, the two clauses, but I'm paraphrasing to save time. But basically, the clauses say, a municipality cannot charge two different rates for the same level of service. Now, to me, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems clear to me, our taxation policy is illegal and contravenes the municipal act. I also did some little more research. There's 444 municipalities in Ontario. Only one has a surcharge on policing. That's us here in Greater Napanee. Now, what a 444, I think that tells you something when there's only us that has a surcharge. Loyalists, our neighbor right next door, for example, they got a mixture of urban and rural like we do, they certainly have no surcharge on policing. They have a 2% surcharge on transit, which is in the urban area of Amherstview, and that's the surcharge they have. I'm just interested, the reason I brought this up before was because I'm interested in my fellow colleagues here on this council. You know, I'm pretty proud of what we've accomplished this year, and I think we've always been fair to the taxpayers, and we've always looked at what was fair to all of Greater Napanee, not just one area of the community. So, but I think we have one more wrong to right, and I think this is it. But I'd be interested in my fellow council members' comments on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. Is there anyone else? Counselor Schenk.
I'll just say one thing, it's not Ian Semple, it's Scott Semple. The level of service, when you, well, just because you want to stay to policing, I'll bet you dollars to donuts, you put a call in here, right here to this town, or in 99 Avenue, or right here, and I'll go home, and I'll put a call in, and I'll guarantee you, they're going to respond here quicker because they go where the calls are. In the summertime, when you have a higher traffic count, there is more OPP in our area, all right? But they go where the need is, and of course, they're going to say that it's the same level of service. They're not going to say, oh, well, we're not serving your area. There's just no way there. That was my only comment on that. I'm not going to get into the weeds and get into what has and what isn't, or whatever.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk. Is there anyone else? Counselor Norrie.
Yeah, I have lots of stats here, being on the board, but I'm not going to get into all that because, you know, not going to change certain minds. I mean, 2,700 square kilometers of patrol, it's reactive, not proactive. It's everywhere the same. Going back to my past life 18 years ago, downtown, millions of calls more than Ancaster, who paid a lot more money in taxes, they didn't get service either unless a call came out, but everybody paid the same taxing. Policing is not a specialized service, it's for everybody. Should I pay more for, or less for snow plowing because they use less fuel? Of course not, because I use county roads too. So you can argue each thing, but policing is for everybody, and if something happens, they'll be there. We're stuck with the 401, we get money back for that, but they got 200 kilometers of 401, 75 officers, they go as far as Kaladar, do the math, none of us see cruises too much. And then you're typical, compared, four to five hours with paperwork for an officer, they're off the road. So I mean, none of us see cars that much, but if you need them and a serious thing, they'll be there. So I don't think what was done last year was fair, I voted, or last 2019, I voted against it, but as councils will, but from what I've been reading too, it appears that we're in the wrong doing this, but it's up to the will of council.
Thanks, Counselor Norrie. Is there any other comments or questions? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to make another comment on the level of service. Level of service for policing is a little different than the level of service for fire departments. Fire departments are dispatched from the fire stations. Policing, they're dispatched from wherever they are. They could be over on 33 Highway and be dispatched to Counselor Schenk's property. They could be in West Plain and be dispatched to my property on King Street. I just don't see how you can measure the level of service other than you've got to listen to the commander of the OPP when he says the level of service is the same. So that's, I just wanted to make that comment about dispatching. I mean, I think they're going to be dispatched sooner certainly to a more serious incident than they are a minor incident, but that's the same in both areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Is there any other comments or questions? Counselor Penau.
Thank you, Worship. Through you, a question for Madam Clerk.
Thank you, worship through you. A question for Madam Clerk. Are we doing this?
Through your worship. That is a question I would like to have a staff report to provide a response to. And I will just note that the motion that is on the floor is, does council want to talk about this again at the next meeting? Yes or no? Is the decision that's on the floor tonight. The municipal act does have provisions about how you do apply special area rating. And I think staff can provide you a more detailed response if if we're directed to provide a report on that topic.
Thanks, Counselor Penau. Is there anything else?
Seeing none, I'll just weigh in briefly. I'm in an interesting position here. I actually police this area. I had a uniform on. I ran the road on the four oh one. I police the town of Greater Napanee. I can tell you unequivocally, you don't get the same quality of policing as on thirty-three highway that you do in the town of Greater Napanee. And how do I know that? Because I've done it. So I, whether it was Scott Semple or Pat Finnegan that was here that said unequivocally, you get the same level of policing, I can tell you, I was there, had the uniform on, and you don't. Whether in fact it's illegal, you know what? This matter has been out there since amalgamation. That's where this thing started. So this thing started in nineteen eighty-eight. There hasn't been a government agency yet that come and told us that's illegal. So maybe they will, but they haven't yet. So I guess my personal opinion is, is first of all, we're extremely preemptive in doing this because we've been guaranteed by the Solicitor General at a deputation less than two weeks ago that the billing process is going to change. None of us know how that's going to work. We may get billed calls for service, we may, we don't know how that's going to work, but we know that there's a new billing process that's going to come into play, but we don't know what that is yet. So at least my personal opinion is it's extremely, extremely preemptive to even have this conversation. And we've worked very hard, and I agree with Counselor Martin on this, is that we've worked very hard to bring this community together. This community hasn't thought in the same direction since amalgamation. And I'm not so certain that they're even thinking in the same direction now, but we're getting there. And we're working on it. And you know what? I think if we we stay the course, we keep moving along, we see, see what's going to happen here in the next little bit. We're living in some unique times where usually things change on a weekly or bi-weekly or sometimes monthly or yearly basis. They're changing on an hourly basis with the things that are going on down south. And to, at least in my humble opinion, to engage in a in a conversation that we're going to engage in here, I think it'd be somewhat reckless, but that's just my personal opinion. I will leave it at that. Is there anything that come out of anything that I had to say? And I'll open up to the floor again because sometimes I do talk a little bit too much. So go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
Just, this is saying to all council, and all due respect, don't get me wrong. I went through amalgamation. I was on county council when we did the amalgamation. There's a lot of hurt, a lot of pros and cons. It took twenty-some-odd years to get this municipality to think that we're one municipality. To open up a sore like this, to go ahead, you will open up a can of worms that you guys will never, ever even dream of having. I've lived it. I've been through it. For the small difference considering the the wound that would open, it would just bring us all back great to square one, and you'd have de-amalgamation, you would have this, and you would have a fractured community like you've never seen. And I'm not threatening, I'm just promising. I've been it, done it, seen it. We're all one municipality, and I know I'll have people even holler at me for even saying that. We all have to work on the same boat. We have to row to the same. We have the infrastructure we have to fix. We have public utilities. We need the snowplow. We have all the aspects of this municipality working. We all have to row in the same direction. Soon as we start rowing in different directions, you're going to be just spinning your wheels, and this town is never going to proceed. I know former municipalities have been in that way, but that isn't the way I operate. Let's just move ahead and let's not go down that road. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Counselor Schenk. Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to respond to Counselor Schenk. As far as ripping this gab off, that was done two thousand and nineteen, the last term of council. The town had already paid, like I said, a hundred grand, had a committee, come up with a solution, and then they they threw a wrench in it in two thousand and nineteen. I didn't throw the wrench in it tonight. As a matter of fact, I just followed through with that resolution. So that's all I have to say on it. I still believe our taxation policy is illegal and it contravenes the municipal act. I won't go any farther than that.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. Is there any further conversations, questions, comments with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Counselor Martin?
Absolutely. Yep. And I'll turn it over. If there's nothing further, I'll turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Terry, or sorry, you're
Sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
Read the motion again. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Clerk?
Since it's recorded vote, I'll read it. I've always read it when it's recorded. So through your worship, the motion that is on the floor is that at the next council meeting, council review resolution number one five eight slash two zero, which reads that council accept the proposal from Axel Thesberg, outlined in correspondence received at the special session of council on December ninth, two thousand and nineteen, to end the five-year phase-in of method four from the Watson Report in two thousand and nineteen, which would result in a rural discount rate for policing costs of nine percent, which is five point five percent over the three point five percent for the area rating of sidewalks, streetlights, and fire response. And further, that this decision be reviewed during the next term of council. Word one, Counselor Schenk? Sorry?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Penau.
Sorry about that. I just have a question that came from rehearing the motion. So just to be clear, this is just a motion to see whether the will of council is to have a following-up conversation regarding this. And out of that conversation, I could maybe expect to see a staff report regarding whether the municipal act is being contravened or not, right?
So through your worship, I will say, given that that is a specific legal question, we would want to seek legal advice. I probably cannot have that for you by Thursday afternoon when we publish the agenda for the eleventh. Just given the timing.
But that's something
The resolution would be the council talks about this more. And at that point, council might direct that they want to see staff reports. They might direct that they talked about it, that they don't want to change anything. There's a lot of directions that conversation could go. So if council votes yes, you want to keep talking about this. If council votes no, you don't want to keep talking about this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselor Penau. And if there's nothing further, I'll turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Word one, Counselor Schenk?
No.
Word two, Counselor Hicks?
No.
Word three, Counselor Penau?
Yes.
Word four, Counselor Norrie?
Yes.
Word five, Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Calver?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
That motion is defeated.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on. Items for discussion, CAO organizational improvement mandate letter. Mr. Grant, you're going to deal with that one?
Thank you, your worship. Through you, Mr. Merida, members of council. So just building on the report that is on the agenda this evening, what I'm presenting to you is essentially a CAO work plan for organizational improvement. This comes from my own observations, direction of council, best practice. And it seeks to put us on the same page of what is essentially a plan to help make the organization more predictable in the way that it operates, with the goal of having it being able to respond both efficiently and predictably to council direction. And so in that, you know, it is the role of council, and what I'm seeking is for you to endorse my mandate letter, what you can hold me accountable for. And then coming out of that, what I will provide senior leaders who report to me is their mandate letters, which seek to operationalize the goals outlined in mine. They're based on four principles of financial sustainability and responsible management of assets, creating predictable organizational behavior, continued development of mutually supportive and accountable team culture, and prioritizing open and transparent communication to council and the community. These would be the areas of improvement, I think, that are most pressing. We're doing well in many areas. There's also areas where we can seek to improve. And these are the areas where there are some elements that I that I think that we can lean into. In terms of financial sustainability, what I propose prioritizing is the development implementation of enterprise-wide performance, financial infrastructure maintenance measurement systems, supported by reliable data with a specific focus on fleet and facilities, roads, and equipment. Review and analysis of the town's current approach to fees and charges, identification and acquisition of non-taxation funding sources with a large focus on government grants. For predictable organizational behavior, the development and monitoring of individual service standards that allow services to be delivered according to the expectations set by council, which will be the subject of discussion this evening. This particular item seeks to give, this is an area of influence and direction that I would suggest allows council to really influence what is this experience that you want citizens have of the of the services that you're responsible for. The identifying and rectifying, rectifying organizational policy deficits, particularly related to procurement, staffing, performance management, and areas of staff authority. Ensuring there is regular reporting for organizational efforts and outcomes based on objective data collection and analysis and strategies designed to address the impact of the town's unfunded capital and operational needs. For supportive and mutually accountable culture, development implementation of a centralized procurement process, much that, you know, informed by the KPMG forensic review. Development and implementation of a centralized policy compliance system, inclusive of digital tools, training, and education supports. Development and implementation of ongoing training, including the development and implementation of a conflict of interest policy for staff and the development implementation of employee recognition programs. And for open and transparent communication, I would recommend the creation of a clear corporate communication strategy, inclusive of priority areas of communication, and being really clear about the manner in which information is going to be delivered and really deliberate about the types of information that we're able to give, essentially picking our targets with the resources that we have. Development of clear communications and public engagement policies and processes, so helping, you know, helping the organization understand what's their part in communications, visual identity, priorities, that sort of thing. And with public engagement policies, helping staff understand what the expectations are for things they're bringing forward for engagement with the community and the manner in which that's conducted. Creation of communications guidelines for, and as well for, sorry, community engagement, so to operationalize those policies and development of reporting processes related to confidential information designed to minimize when reports are submitted for in-camera discussions. So minimizing, to the extent possible, the number of reports that are delivered to council with a recommendation to go in camera and providing as much information publicly as possible. And I believe that is, those are all things that council has recommended to me that is their desire. So those are the elements that I'm seeking for council's endorsement. And just at a high level, what happens next is those principles become projects. And just a handful of those projects that the council will see, and they're outlined in mandate letters for senior leaders, which then become work plan items for people who report to them, which then get embedded in performance reviews. Service standards for every external-facing program and service for the town. A fees and charges review, and effectively that would look at what are we, what are we charging in terms of fees and charges? How does it compare to others? And what is the strategy for that? Doesn't necessarily mean they need to change, but I think it's important that you know, you know, what's the impact of that? A corporate communication strategy, a system of common criteria and data management, so we can measure, for example, fleet and parks in the same way that we manage fleet and public works. Development of a comprehensive land registry and related financial plan, which I'm pleased to say is well underway. Policies and processes, things such as a delegated authority bylaw, a complement control policy which would identify who is responsible for headcount. What are the differences in the responsibilities between council and the CAO? Addressing issues with procurement, KPMG recommendations, sustainable approach, accessing grant funding, training, employee engagement, development of the Market Square precincts. And as I mentioned, regular reporting to council on a number of items, so we can deliver information proactively in areas of interest and concern. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions for Mr. Grant with respect to his report or his presentation? Counselor Schenk?
I'll move that for recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Schenk. He's moved that council receive and endorse the mandate letter of the chief administrative officer outlining the organizational improvements to be achieved by the end of two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six council term. Do we have a secondary? And then I'll go to Counselor Penau. I know he wants to weigh in. So seconded by Counselor Hicks. Go ahead, Counselor Penau.
Thank you, worship through you, Matthew. With, in regards to, on page five of the report, under the creating predictable organizational behavior, on the bullet points, it says identify and rectify an organizational policy defects. It goes on to speak about how employees will enter and leave the organization. Are you talking about onboarding and offboarding? Is that part that you're talking about there?
So, thank you, Counselor Penau. I'm talking about a number of things. So, you know, how employees enter and leave the organization, but also, you know, how staff complement is added to the organization beyond, you know, if 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 complement is going to expand, what are the specific mechanisms to have that happen? So for clarity, headcount and the number of employees in an organization is your privilege. And then how employees are onboarded and off-boarded are my responsibility. But just creating some clarity around that, because I know in a number of municipalities, sometimes people aren't necessarily clear on what is their area of authority and what is not. Is it within staff's authority to move, say, a staff member's position to a different position which has a material impact on budgets and, say, service standards? And the answer to that is no. But does that happen in some municipalities? Yes. But creating clarity around that and ensuring that all levels of the organization understand who is responsible for what is specifically what that's referring to.
Thank you. Just one more, your worship. Thank you for that. And then then when we go on to talk about the in-camera reports and stuff, this is very important to me. And I'm sure with my fellow counselors, is that it's a sore spot in the community. And as clear as we can be without divulging too much information about what happens, what's going on in closed session, it's very important to walk that very, that fine line. And and I think that this is very important to concentrate on. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penau. Is there, Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, your worship. I was looking to see if anyone else had anything to say.
I was looking to see if anyone else had anything to say. I was up very early with a cold this morning, and I read through this twice. And I have to say that job well done. I'm, I'm pleased. And the mandate letters to the senior leadership team, it is just spot on. And so I appreciate the amount of effort that you put into this, Matthew. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else before we call for the vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, opposed, motion is carried. Next matter, service levels overview. Mr. Grant, is that yours as well?
It is. And I believe this is probably the last time you'll have to see my face this evening. We have a new remote control. So I'll aim to be brief in this, but the, the idea of service standards is something in a number of municipalities, and candidly, it's a sign of maturity in municipalities. And it is a way to outline the services we provide and to match the aspirations of council, the efforts of staff, and combine it with resources and targets. It's, it's a way to make the way we deliver services predictable and understood. In my time here, I've had conversations around the same service with different members of the community or staff and what we're trying to achieve. I mean, we do great work, but sometimes the perspective of what we're trying to achieve isn't always the same with, depending on who you're talking to. And as well, I think it's important to ensure that the services we're providing meet your So I'm going to take us through just an overview of what service levels are, and then what council can expect in the coming months, beginning at the end of this month with the fire department, is an outline of the services we provide as they are, recommendations for what we think might need to be changed, and as well, council has the opportunity to guide where services go to meet your aspirations and expectations, and it's our obligation to tell you what it would take. And generally, the levers are resources or changes in different other services. All right. So why do we need service levels in general? We want to ensure that staff understands what we're legally required to do, and I would say that we do, but making sure we're all on the same page, because there's some services that we provide that we really don't have an option. Like, you know, it's shall provide these, ensuring that staff understands what council expects of them and, and the whole of council. So is it more important that we do landscaping in ballparks or pull weeds in a parking lot? Both of those are services we provide. We can't necessarily do both to the same degree. Which do you prefer? Would it be property standards that we really want to focus in on, or, or parking enforcement's or encampments patrols? There's a finite level of resources that need to be allocated in a certain, in a certain area, and it is your privilege to tell us what it is that you want. Making sure it's easier to prioritize and measure the outcome of our work and report on that. It really facilitates resource conversations. And so a good example would be a skating rink. If there's a recommendation that we want one or more outdoor skating rinks, and it would be in addition to the work plan, it's our obligation to tell you what that would take. It would take, and I don't know what it would take because I don't do that, but it might be a resource, it might be doing something different over there, but just letting you know what your options are so we can fine tune services to do what you want. If it's a budget issue, it isn't always that you have to say yes or no to more money. It might be you dial a service up in one area and dial it down in another. It gives you a greater degree of finite control over budgeting and, and how services are delivered. And then ensuring the community understands how we work. I've had a number of conversations with people who have asked me, when are we going to start building housing, like, social housing units? And, and prospectively, we don't do that. But helping people understand these, these are the services we provide and specifically what we're trying to achieve.
If I may break in, Mr. Grant, we'll look for a motion to go past 10 o'clock, as much as I really don't want to do that. Moved by Deputy Mayor Cawver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motion is carried. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. I'm pleased to say I don't anticipate a ton of heavy agendas after this evening. Why do we need them? You know, we want to make sure that you and future councils understand the businesses that you govern. You know, what is and what is not within your control? Lots is, some isn't. Such as policing, you don't get to decide you don't want to do it. Giving council the ability to adjust services to meet community expectations and helping the public understand what we're doing. And so how are service levels established? So legislative requirements such as minimum maintenance standards, the province tells us, this is what you shall do. Council direction, you tell us what you want. And then there are other areas where it's staff discretion. It'd be more of a range, we're going to do something between here or here, between this time and this time, based on operational capacity. And it's service levels are a mixture of all of those, and one of the key ingredients is resourcing. And it doesn't always have to be a discussion on we need, it's a discussion of if you want this, then here are your options, and you get to choose that, but you want to prioritize what you want to prioritize. In the absence of that, we'll do our best, but it won't necessarily be the community's will coming through you, it would be our professional judgment. And so based on that kind of information, what you're going to see in service levels as they come down, as they have mandated service levels, you're going to deliver this in this way, and that's it. And nobody in this room has a choice about that. There'll be essential, you will tell us, this is what we want to see. We'd like to see priorities here, we'd like to see this, we don't care as much about this, doesn't mean it's not important, it just means it's not the priority of this council at this particular moment in time. And then there's discretionary, which is we want to deliver this service. You know, we may at one point want to deliver it in a different way, but we're prioritizing other services at the moment, so we appreciate that this will come with a range. And you'll report to us on what we were able to do, and that's generally on operational requirements and left, and left to staff discretion. And so what you're going to see with service levels is you get a general overview of what the service is. So here's the higher-level overview, here's the general buckets of what this service provides. So the fire department provides the fire department services, but if you're looking at a department like Parks, Recreation and Culture, the buckets you're going to see is, you know, landscaping, parks maintenance, recreation, events, and then under those will be individual service levels about what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And so everyone's really clear on what the expectations are. You know, overall service type, is this a legislated service or are we choosing to do this? What are the funding sources? What are the resource levels? And what are the authorities that we need to be aware of? Legislation, bylaw, policies, major plans, or nothing? So if we're going to look at the fire department and you're going to see this, and I'd like to thank the fire chief for coming along for the ride as we started developing these. But, you know, you'll get the general overview of what it's designed to achieve. So, for example, the fire department is established to ensure composite fire department is in place to provide core services of fire suppression, fire prevention, and fire safety education. It's a legislated service, and it has mandated service levels that we have to do. It's got essential service levels that you'll ask us to do, and then it has discretionary services where the fire department is able to deliver those with the capacity, which may range at different points, points in time. It's tax-supported with operating and capital budgets, it has 10 F T E, including both the deputy chief and the fire chief, 53 volunteers and an operating wages of $2.1 million. And what we need to be aware of is the Fire Prevention and Protection Act, a regulating bylaw, fire prevention policy, the 2024 Community Risk Assessment. From there, we would break it down and you'll see subservices for those. So if you get a subservice, think of like a general service would be winter maintenance, and then subservices be plowing, sanding, sidewalk clearing, and each of those would have a different level of service to them. For landscaping, you would have sports field grass cutting, parks grass cutting, service center grass cutting. You might prioritize one over another. For bylaw enforcement, encampment bylaw enforcement, parking enforcement, property maintenance, you might choose as a council that one is more important to you than another. And that is your privilege, and it may not be the same in the next council. For a subservice, you'll have the name, the description, the service level, what's the target? So how are we judging whether or not we're hitting your expectations? How are we measuring that? And we're going to report on that. What resources are attached to that? And what are the authorities governing that? So you're going to see, when it comes to you, for example, like fire safety education, it's legislated, but the service levels, you have to do it, but how you choose to do it is up to us. And so we're going to provide fire safety education in partnership with community demographic profile, most at risk from injury or death. So we'll give a target, for example, maintain the number of safety events at 2023 levels or the previous year levels, and that's what we'll measure how we're doing. You might choose a target such as reducing the annual value of losses per 1,000 population. That's something that we could measure. And then you've got the resources allocated. And so the conversations we're going to have, for example, one council member might say, I'd like us to do more than we did last year. Our obligation is to tell you, okay, we can't do that with what we have here now, but if you wanted that to do more, we would need a resource here, or we'd need to look somewhere else and do less over there. You know, another example, not a real example, but let's talk about customer service. Let's, you know, customer service agents answering calls. Let's, let's say you, you set an essential service level and you wanted to respond to phone calls immediately within three rings. Let's just say that was the service level, we want you to do this. Say, all right, well, that's going to take five people just answering the phone. You're like, eh, I don't want to spend that. Okay? Then we might change the target to something different to match with the service levels. Those are the conversations that we're going to have in the coming months on every single service line. We'll make it as succinct as possible, but the outcome really matters because in addition to budget, I would say this is your largest area of influence about the, the areas of services that we provide, because I know for a fact that admin, that people working in administration want to do what you want. This helps us know specifically what that is. It also helps us understand and communicate to others who might ask us to do something different. Well, this is what we're doing. This is what we've been, this is the target that had been set, and this is what we're striving for, and then we'll report on it and tell you how we're doing. And that, in a nutshell, is service levels, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Penel, and then I'll go to Counselor Shank.
Thank you, worship through you, Matthew. Thanks for this. I just, you, you say that we're going to be looking at this in the, in the future, very near future. And I'm just questioning the timing of this. I know that it needs to be done, and I appreciate that. But this could have a big impact on our budget that we're about to set. So is, how are we going to work that? Like, is it, okay, would one of the elements be, if you, if you change the service level or whatever, then it's going to cost you more? Or if you, if you reduce the service level, you're going to save money, but we're going to have to work within the restraints of the budget that we have? So I'm kind of, kind of hesitant on this a little bit.
So through you, Mr. Merritt, and Counselor Penel, I would say, consider this, putting in a benchmark. Right now, you want, we want to, I'm going to ask the team to put together, what are we doing now within our existing budget? I would say for the remainder of the year until the next budget process, we're not adding resources to increase line items because we've done that process. Ideally, we would have had these in place before the budget process, but you still have the opportunity to change service levels that in a way that's cost neutral. You just change the priority. How do you want to allocate the resources that you're already paying for? And this gives you the opportunity to do that. Now, what I would suggest is if we're going through service levels and you think, I would like to increase in this area by way of example, what I would say is we push that over and bring it to the next budget process, we can tell you what that would cost. But I think it's really important that we have a benchmark that we know exactly what we're doing, how we're measuring it, and how we're reporting on to you and the community about the services we're providing, what they look like and what they're designed to do.
Thank you. Counselor Shank?
It's like running any business, is you're making it more efficient. So exactly what like Chris had said it to us, now don't quote me, but it is wrong, but we had 450 acres of parks that we have to cut, and when he went ahead and through the budget process, we needed another lawnmower. All right? So this is the service level. Now downtown, Long Water Street, where we have some parking facilities, the grass and the weeds were really high, it's a service level. Do you want that cut? Do you want it sprayed? What can we do? What can't we do? So therefore, you're doing, you're basically saying, okay, this is, we already know what our budget is here, but it's just like we're doing, keeping track of what we're doing for repairs for vehicles and everything else, it's data-driven. So I kudos for this, this is great, and I move staff recommendations so we can get out of here before midnight. All right? So all I'm saying is, is running any type of business is just an efficient way of doing it. So it's going to be great to do it because we've gone ahead and we've complained, oh, the, the roads weren't graded or whatever, or this wasn't done, or that wasn't, what's that service level or what it is? And then you can measure it, whether we're achieving it, can we improve it? Can we not improve it? Where can we put funds that we have are the best bang for the buck or not? So I'll put that motion on, and there we go, and I'll shut up so we can get going.
We do have a recommendation or a motion that council received for information, the C A O service levels overview report, moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Does anybody else have any comments or questions with respect to Matthew's report or his presentation? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, opposed, motion is carried. Increase to cemetery budget. Mr. Brown, I think you're going to comment on that or provide us some information.
Thank you, worship. So staff are seeking to amend the budget to add $15,000 in contracted services in our cemetery department. This represents the municipal expenditure that staff anticipate being required for 2025 to meet our obligations as currently identified by the B A O. Under the Funeral, Burial and Cremation Services Act, local municipalities become responsible for abandoned cemeteries that are located within their boundaries and are responsible for ensuring those cemeteries remain compliant with the requirements of the act and regulations. Town staff have been contacted by the, the B A O, the Bereavement Authority of Ontario, regarding abandoned cemeteries within our boundaries, and we're working with the B A O and our legal council to ensure that our legal obligations are properly understood prior to undertaking the directed work. As an early settlement area in Ontario, there are many abandoned and unregistered cemeteries within our municipal boundaries, and this is anticipated to be an ongoing area of, of legal obligation and, and associated costs. We, we do want to bring back further reports for council detailing the work that does need to be done, but, you know, under the act, this, this work, we are obligated to complete this work, and we didn't know of some of these expenses at the time of budget deliberations and And so we're bringing this to you now before the budget is passed in knowing that there are gonna be expenses incurred here in, in twenty twenty-five, and we don't have money budgeted for it. And because it's work that we, we need to do and we're required to do, we're bringing this to you now right before. So apologies for the, the last minute notice. But we do feel that the work needs to be done. We don't have budgeted funds for it right now. Any questions? I'd be happy to take.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship through you. Chris, thanks for this. I'm just wondering, is there any type of cemetery reserves that we could take this out of for this year?
So through you, worship, there's, there's no cemetery reserves established at this time. Being fairly new to the municipality, we haven't established any reserves yet.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Pennell. Is there any other questions or comments for Chris? Go ahead, Counselor Schenck.
My only comment is, is that is MTO where the province gonna be paying any towards for the work that needs to be done? Because being an adjacent, you know, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, so through, through your worship, so there's, I know the specific location you're speaking about. There is going to be further reports coming that will identify some things in, in closed session for some certain properties. But right now, we know that there is some, you know, some legal fees, some assessments that needs to be done. And there's gonna be a cost to the municipality, unfortunately, and we are mandated to, to do the work. So really, we don't have much of a choice in that. But we are gonna bring back more detailed reports for council to keep everyone up to speed.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I think Mr. Grant wants to weigh in.
Through you, Mr. Merritt, Counselor Schenck. I, I'm confident every effort has been made for burden sharing with third parties.
I'll move staff recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Schenck. We do have a motion mover that council received for information, the Parks Recreation Culture Increase to Cemetery Budget Report, and further that council approved to an increase to the cemetery operating budget of an additional fifteen thousand dollars for contracted services, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Is there any further conversations, questions, or concerns that council has with respect to the presentation or the report that's before us? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Apples, motion's carried. Adoption of the twenty twenty-five operating and capital budgets. Ms. Hamel, when you get settled in there, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, your worship. I will try to move through the presentation we have prepared kind of as quickly as possible, given the time this evening. And all of this information, with the exception of a few amendments, council has seen previously at additional, our previous council meetings. Before we do get into the discussions on the proposed operating and capital budgets, I do just wanna take a moment to speak about the looming and pending threats of tariffs and how we as an organization and members of our SLT and management team have looked at this concern. So going into this budget conversation, we had a number of meetings to discuss this, including one today, where we were looking at the specific impacts that we thought this could have on our capital budgets. So it's most important that council understands that at any point in time, if a, if an item is to go over budget, council always will have indication in advance of that. So if it reaches a threshold over a hundred thousand dollars, it will always come to council. And if it comes in over budget, it will always come to council before we approve those purchases. So when we looked at our capital items that we think will be impacted by this, there are a few that kind of rise to the top, primarily as it relates, relates to fleet. And as we said, those will come back to council, and we will have contingency plans in place and options for council at that point in time to be able to fund any increase that may come as a result of pending tariffs. So we may look to use our fleet reserve. We can look at scaling back the initial scope respects of investments. We can look at canceling projects entirely or reprioritizing funds within the existing budget. So we just want council to know that we have taken a look at this. And, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces to this conversation right now, up to and including, you know, the tariffs not happening. However, we always need to be prepared that this could impact the municipal budget. So those are the, some of the things that we've taken into consideration up until this point. Some of the biggest drivers that we have in our capital budget right now are on our roads, which we have provincial and federal funding to support those. Those capital projects are primarily driven through in-house work. So we're not looking to source things that likely would have high tariffs attached to them. So we're, we're thinking that those ones will not be impacted. But I just wanted to, again, highlight to council that any impacts that would create an overage in capital budgets will come to councils for their ultimate approval and recommendation. Did the CEO have anything further you wanted to add to that?
Thank you. Just for members of council, I, as I mentioned to the mayor earlier today, regardless of, of where the economic winds take us, we will make sure that you have your hand on the wheel.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions for Alan with respect to the document, the budget that's before us this evening? Or the presentation that she's done or the comments that Mr. Grant has made? We do have a mover that council approved the twenty twenty-five operating and capital budgets as presented at this meeting, and further that the adoption of the budget be ratified by bylaw at the next regular meeting of council. Moved by Counselor Schenck, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Is there any further comments? Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. I'd like to just talk to council a little bit about the flooring at the Home Hardware Rink. I thi- I think this is something that we should review. It's a seventy thousand dollar price tag. In my notes, I had it down as it was gonna be coming from the reserve. I was corrected, thank you very much for that. I just think that for this flooring, it's a user pay type of situation where, where the difference is where the floor scrubber that we're purchasing is coming from the general reserve. I understand that one coming from their, or general levy, sorry. I understand that because other people that do not pay to use the ice surface are, are visiting that facility, much like the walking groups and, and things like that, or people going into the banquet hall. So I understand that. But to have wear and tear on the rubberized floor in the hallways and, and in the change rooms, I think should be coming from the user pay system, much like what the, the ice resurfacer is, and also the, the humidifier that we're purchasing through, partially through the, the building maintenance reserve as well. I think that if anybody is causing wear and tear on that floor has some sort of close connection with the user pay, whether it be you've rented the ice surface, you are there for public skating or, or somebody has sponsored the public skating. And therefore, it should be different than, than somebody with skates on causing wear and tear than, than what the general public is. So I just wanna see what council thinks of, of maybe making that as an amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Pennell. Does anybody wanna weigh in on? I can, go ahead, Counselor Norrie.
Yes, I, I have to agree with Counselor Pennell. I mean, I don't even own a pair of skates. I don't mind paying for the scrubber because I do attend banquets and buy supper there once in a while, but, or watch a game. But I mean, us in the urban area pay for the, the water treatment plant through service fees or whatever you wanna call it, bag tags or similar things. So we've opened that door. So I agree, it should just come out of the user pay area of the, because that's where the damage happens. My running shoes don't scratch it up, in my opinion anyways.
Thanks, Counselor Norrie. Is there anything else? Seeing none, I, I'll probably disagree with you on that. It's regular wear and tear on a facility. We're putting money into a facility that everyone benefits from. We can allow it to get worn down. We can allow it to, so that it's not the classic facility that we have. But I, I, I probably disagree with that and the fact that there's a lot of other user groups that use it. It sounds like we're sort of blaming the hockey players and the figure skaters and the public skaters for the wear and tear on a, on a flooring that a lot of other people use as well. So I have no problem leaving it where it is. At least that's my personal opinion. But obviously, I'll, I'll leave it up to everybody else. Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. Just to, to comment on what you said. I do believe, and we could ask Mr. Brown this, but I do believe that the floor is being worn out from the actual, the blades of the skates. And if, if we have a building maintenance fund, and this is a maintenance item, I believe that that's where we should be pulling these monies from. What else would we use it for? You know, there's, this is part of maintenance for that. It's, and, and I strongly believe that somebody walking down, as, as Counselor Norrie said, with running shoes is not wearing that out at the rate as to what sharp ice blades would be doing. So I, I just think that with, with it being that you're connected with some type of a pay for that. And let's not mention to, forget to men- I forgot to mention, is that we do have tournaments at this facility, and there are outside people coming into our town to have these tournaments. And, and I think that if there's a fee paid to use that service and there's monies coming out of those fees to go into that reserve, that we should dip into the reserve for this.
Thanks, Counselor Pennell. Counselor Schenck?
Do you wanna go ahead? Through the budget process, I remember it was a long debate. I think it was close to an hour that we were debating about the, I was the dehumidifier that we went ahead and I was proposing that we take it all out of the reserves. And remember, we debated that and we ended up fifty-fifty, so we met halfway. So now we're gonna open it all up again. But I pay a ton of taxes. I wish I'd only paid five or ten or fifteen thousand bucks of taxes a year. I pay way more than that. But I know a lot of my taxes go to the school board. My kids are, youngest one is thirty years old, but we still pay for it. So there's a lot of things that I don't currently use, and my hockey days are long gone and done. God forbid if I ever happen to go on the boards. I know Terry's still fighting the fight. But all I'm saying is, is we've already gone through that thing and we already discussed this. My only question is, Alan, that when you do put out the tax bill, that you put in information that's four point nine two percent that it was, that was municipal driven on it, like on your explanation, and the one point five six percent that was done outside, just on the back sheet of it, so that information sheet. Now, does that come in the second term or is the first, because the first installment's already done? So I already answered my own question. This is what happens, the reason why you don't have meetings, go past ten o'clock. So thank you. I just answered my own question why it's not in there.
Thank you, Counselor Schenck. Counselor Hicks, then I'll go to Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. I also remember that discussion. It was a long one. I believe that this should remain where it is. It should not be coming out of the reserve. In my mind, this is a consumable item. The roof is, the building is still gonna be there. And in twenty years, we're gonna have to replace the floor again because the floor is designed, it's a design, it's the way it's designed. It's gonna, it's gonna eventually fail. It's a consumable item. It is not something that is part of the building reserve fund, which is intended to eventually replace the existing arena. And so the more we dip into that reserve for this type of item, the longer it's gonna take to build up the reserve again in order to do the arena. So I respectfully disagree with Counselor Pennell.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Counselor Pennell?
Thank you, worship. Through you, respectfully to Counselor Schenck and Counselor Hicks. If, if I follow your line of thinking on this, then the dehumidifier should also be come out of the general taxation levy as well. Because, believe it or not, it is a usable, consumable product that is running all the time, that is a wear and tear item. So I don't understand how you could agree to have half of the dehumidifier come out of the reserve fund, but then change your, your, your thoughts and, and not have the flooring come out, so.
Thank you, Counselor Pennell. Deputy Mayor Culver?
I know we discussed it several times back and forth, but can you just remind me again how much we have in the reserve fund for the arena? I thought it was eight hundred and some thousand, some, what is that?
Through your worship, sorry, save Alan from restrictions or this. It, it's just slightly over a million dollars at this point in time.
Thanks. Thanks, Nathan. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Culver. Is there any more? Go ahead.
I know we had already decided on it, but we've also now allotted another fifteen thousand dollars for the, for the cemetery. I don't know, can we do a split on it or can we just put it all out of reserves? I'm, I'm not sure which way to go because we're gonna, we've already got the budget set up here at four point nine two and then a one five six for total of six four eight. But we just threw another fifteen thousand on there, which is only gonna be miniscule. But if we, if we took that out, or took the seventy thousand out of reserves, we'd actually bring that down just a slight, tiny little bit, but not much.
Go ahead, Alan, then I'll go to Counselor Schenck.
Thank you, worship. Just for a point of clarity, the budget that you see presented in further in the presentation and materials provided to council tonight did include the fifteen thousand dollars for the commitment to the, to the cemeteries.
Thanks. Go ahead, Counselor Schenck.
So just for food for thought, the reason why I went ahead and I wanted a portion of that taken out was just to lower the rate. People can only handle a certain amount. You're still over six percent. Last year was over six percent, cost of living and everything else. And we have an aging community that everybody said, how are they gonna be able to afford to live here? And we have people that are paying over ten thousand bucks a year just for their house that they've worked so hard to live on. So all I'm saying, that's the reason why I wanted it. And that's why we're in the predicament we are today, is because everybody kept on sucking from the reserves. When I left here, we had a lot of money in reserves. In those four years, it all went away. So all, and we have to start building the reserves so we can afford our fleet. God forbid if we happen to have a frigging fire truck go down, all right? So if we don't still building up and start paying our debts down, all right? It's gonna come to attain that you don't have that cash flow, and you will never, ever get that pool or never, ever get anything else. You want this municipality to grow a bit or have our books in order? That's the reason why I'm confident in what we did. And we tried to build up those reserves so if something bad happens, all right? Or a, or a sewer line years ago that broke going across underneath the Nappany River when it was a minus thirty day, all right? That was an absorbent cost. So that's all I'm saying is, is let's build the reserves up, all right? Let's not take away. We've got to a happy medium here where at least the tax is a little bit palatable, all right? And go from there.
Thanks, Counselor Schenck. Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. Counselor Schenck started to make my argument for me and then went around. So what I'd like to do is see if I have any support here, and I'll make a motion that we use the, that we take the funding for the home hardware flooring out of the arena capital reserve. And we'll see, see what everybody else has.
Yeah, I think we got a motion on the floor now, counsel, Counselor Pennell. But I'll let Madam Clerk weigh in.
So through your worship, there is already a motion on the floor. This would be contrary to that motion. So you could put forward a motion to amend the main motion, which would need to be considered before council votes on the main motion. So your amendment would be that the council approve the budget as presented at this meeting with a change to fund the arena flooring from reserves instead of general taxation levy. That would be an amendment to that motion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would agree to that amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Pennell. Do we have a second, or Counselor Norrie? Is there any conversations with respect to the amended motion before we get to the motion that was on the floor? Does everybody know where we are with this? I think Madam Clerk, you're gonna have to explain this because I think, that's, that's, let's get some clarity.
So the motion on the floor is to amend the emotion, amend the motion to adopt the budget by funding the arena
amend the motion to adopt the budget by funding the arena flooring out of reserves instead of general taxation levy. That's, that's, that is going to be voted on first. And whether or not that is, if it is approved, then it becomes part of the motion to adopt the budget. If it is defeated, it does not become part of the motion to adopt the budget.
So is it possible to put another motion on the floor now? If we've already got two, can we put three?
One amendment at a time.
Well, I thought we had one motion on the floor at the time.
A motion, under your procedural bylaw, a motion can be put forward to amend the main motion, which council decides yes or no on. And then if somebody wanted to, they could put forward another motion to amend the main motion, which council could put yes or no on.
Okay, it's ten thirty at night. Does everybody have an idea of what we're voting on right now? We've got a, we've got a subsequent motion on the floor. Does everybody understand what that subsequent motion is before we get to the other motion that's on the floor? Pretty much. Does everybody know where that is or where we're at?
Yes is out of reserves. A yes vote is out of, sorry. A yes vote on this is to fund it out of reserves, not the levy, just to be clear.
Just, okay. Let's deal with the councillor Penel's motion. We have a seconder by councillor Norrie. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion. Opposed? Motion's carried. Now, where do we go from here, madam clerk?
So through your worship, now the motion on the floor is the council approve the budget as presented at this meeting with the amendment that the arena flooring, the arena flooring be funded from reserves rather than taxation levy and that the budget be ratified by bylaw at the next meeting.
So before that, we can put another motion on the floor to adjust the amount of money that would be taken out of the reserve with respect to the condenser to the tune of about fifteen thousand dollars. Could we do that?
Through your worship, council can do whatever they would like to do.
Does anybody want to entertain having a motion to adjust the amount of money that's coming out of the reserves with respect to the condenser? I think it was at a fifty fifty. And maybe Alan, you can explain that, what those numbers are.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So currently the dehumidifier, which is the same as the condenser, correct? No.
Not quite, but yeah, so the dehumidifier has been ordered and pre-approved. It's just a matter of how we're funding it. So right now, it's fifty fifty between tax levy and the reserve for the arena.
And what are those numbers, Chris?
So eighty five thousand out of the tax levy and eighty five thousand out of the reserve.
Go ahead councillor Shank.
Since we're at it, so minus the seventy thousand, minus the eighty five thousand, take it all out of reserves and we get four point nine two because one percent raises a hundred and forty thousand. Got a hundred and forty thousand, so you only need a three point nine two percent increase because you just went ahead and took it out of reserves instead of putting on the general tax levy, right? Nathan?
I can't.
Why? You just took seventy thousand dollars out of the first for the flooring that was coming out of the tax levy, not coming out of the tax levy, coming out of the reserve. So you don't have to take it out of the tax levy now, right? So then you went ahead and you were debating the eighty five thousand dollars because it's a hundred and seventy thousand for the dehumidifier.
That was already done. Eighty five thousand dollars already.
No, but we can bring that up as amendment right now.
We could do that as an amendment right now.
We can do that as amendment also. You know what I mean? Because you just did amendment on the last one, so we already voted on it. So why not? Why not? Take her out of it. We just made a friendly amendment last time. We can do it this one.
Councillor Hicks, go ahead and then we'll, if there's any other questions. We still got a motion on the floor, so we can still have a conversation.
So. Oh, but sorry, no, never mind. Ignore me.
Go ahead councillor Hicks.
So let me get this straight. Less than a month ago, we were taking seventy thousand dollars out of the levy to pay for home hardware flooring and the dehumidifier was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars with a fifty fifty split, eighty five and eighty five. Tonight, we amended that to seventy thousand dollars out of reserve for the home hardware flooring, right? That passed? It passed. The amendment passed.
But the main motion has not passed, so technically nothing has passed.
So the main motion on the floor right now is to accept the budget with the amendment?
Yes.
Yeah.
I move that we accept the budget with the amendment. I am not in favor of taking anything else out of the reserves.
Which is the motion that's on the floor, correct, madam clerk?
So. So through your worship, at this point, the motion on the floor is to adopt the budget as presented with the amendment to fund the arena flooring out of reserves and then ratify that by bylaw at the next meeting. Because there was a motion to amend the main motion and that passed, but the main motion itself has not yet been passed.
I, we do have a motion on the floor. And if nobody wants to make another motion to put on the floor, what I'll do is we'll call for the vote. If nobody else wants to make another motion, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed? Motion's carried. Next up is bylaws. Bylaw number 2025 0012 to set an interim tax levy for 2025. We need a motion to put that on the floor. Moved by deputy mayor Calvert, seconded by councillor Martin, ready, first, second and finally passed this fourth day of February 2025. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Look for a motion to confirm the proceedings. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by deputy mayor Calvert. Read a first, second and finally passed this fourth day of February 2025. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Motion to adjourn. Moved by deputy mayor Calvert, seconded by councillor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Good night, folks.